Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to go ahead and say this. 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 I'm going to go ahead and say this.[210.98][210.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[211.98][211.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[212.98][212.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[213.98][213.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[214.98][214.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[215.98][215.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[216.98][216.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[217.98][217.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[218.98][218.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[219.98][219.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[220.98][220.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[221.98][221.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[222.98][222.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[223.98][223.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[224.98][224.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[225.98][225.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[226.98][226.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[227.98][227.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[228.98][228.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[229.98][229.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[230.98][230.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[231.98][231.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[232.98][232.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[233.98][233.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[234.98][234.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[235.98][235.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[236.98][236.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[237.98][237.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[238.98][238.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[239.98][239.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[240.98][240.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[241.98][241.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[242.98][242.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[243.98][243.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[244.98][244.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[245.98][245.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[246.98][246.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[247.98][247.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[248.98][248.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[249.98][249.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[250.98][250.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[251.98][251.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[252.98][252.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[253.98][253.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[254.98][254.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[255.98][255.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[256.98][256.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[257.98][257.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[258.98][258.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[259.98][259.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[260.98][260.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[261.98][261.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[262.98][262.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[263.98][263.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[264.98][264.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[265.98][265.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[266.98][266.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[267.98][267.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[268.98][268.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[269.98][269.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[270.98][270.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[271.98][271.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[272.98][272.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[273.98][273.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[274.98][274.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[275.98][275.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[276.98][276.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[277.98][277.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[278.98][278.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[279.98][279.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[280.98][280.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[281.98][281.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[282.98][282.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.[283.98][283.98][S01. I'm going to go ahead and say this.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the council of the city of Long Beach held Tuesday, February 23rd, 2017 at 7:00 p.m. Councilor O'Call, Councilor Donovan, Councilor Bando, Councilor Moore, Vice President O'Malley, President Torres.
Here.
Let the record indicate the presence of City Manager Jackson and Corporation Councilor Long Adesisi, and now the salute to the left.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, to the Constitution of America, to the Constitution of the United States, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America.
And again, I want to welcome everyone, and if we can get the folks from the lobby to move in, because we have seemed to get an echo from the lobby that hits the back of this wall. So we need people to keep their voices down. Also, I'm going to ask security to help us with that, and closing the doors very good. Thank you so much. And with that, I'm going to ask our city manager to give us our up.
Okay. First item this evening is that the city is committed to honoring the legacy and contributions African Americans have made to our society and the Long Beach community. The city has been hosting a number of events, some of which lie ahead three months, including three movies screenings at the Long Beach Cinema 4 and the Long Beach Taco Library. This Thursday, February 23rd, the city will honor the legacy of Maya Angelou through spoken word by host and flow for the love of words and open mic event at the library. Residents have the opportunity to perform poetry, short fiction readings, acoustic musical performances, and monologues from Black authors who are on the subject of the Black experience. The event will be facilitated by Councilmember Cindy Moore. As mentioned in previous meetings, the city's carryout bag or end state effect on Earth Day, April 22nd. In anticipation of a new rule, we had a city representative and members of the Chamber of Commerce, we probably just saw them at the entrance into the room this evening, providing information about the environmentally conscious law. We also have copies of our one pager in front of the room for anyone who is interested. And also this evening, with significant input over the past two years, after 15 public meetings, the city's comprehensive plan process is moving forward as we prepare to present it to the city council before the city moves into zoning process. We would like to thank everyone who joined at our various meeting booths, providing input and feedback. For more detail on the plan, visit longbeachliveseats.com. In addition, we have one pager regarding the plan in the front of the room, and that's it for today.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We always welcome the updates that our city manager gives us. And again, we thank you, third time for all of you for being here in this room. And with that, we're going to begin our meeting.
Okay, first item this evening is a public hearing for resolution 32 of Long Beach parking requirements for premise 78 West Park Avenue for a restaurant.
Okay, do we have the, well, first of all, let me open that hearing. Is the owner of the folks asking for this permit for all street parking here? Glad you're here, welcome. Would you state your name?
James Anne.
Okay, please, you need to speak right into the mic so people can hear you.
James Anne.
Okay, welcome, James Anne. The first question is, how many employees do you expect to have at this new establishment?
Maximum eight.
Eight. And what are the hours of operation?
Up there around from 10 to 8 o'clock.
Okay. And do you expect any curbside deliveries of any kind?
Yes.
Okay. Will lead to have an idea of what that schedule will be?
Will be four times a month, or basically one per week, and about 13 minutes every day.
Very good, very good. Okay, the question that we ask really all the new businesses that come to Long Beach is that if you are interested at any point to have a bicycle rack placed in front of your store, this is something that we will do, okay? You are interested. Okay. Are there any comments from the councils? Any comments from the overall audience on this first item, cross street parking, folks? Very important, we encourage businesses to come to Long Beach, and one that we encourage you to drive in Long Beach. Thank you. Please stay around until the end of the meeting for the vote, and we'll know exactly what's good. Okay. With that, folks, I'm going to close that hearing.
Okay, a second public hearing for residents, great delay of Long Beach parking requirements for 143 East Park Avenue for a clothing shoe shop.
Okay, do we have the owner of the shoe shop? Very good. Sir, welcome, welcome to Long Beach, and like we mentioned before, we encourage businesses to come to Long Beach. Give me an idea of how many employees you expect to employ?
Myself and my partner and one more.
Okay, very good. Do you anticipate any curbside deliveries of any kind?
No, I would be picking up four hours supplies myself in a van, and then there is a back alley to the market.
Very good, very good. And what are the hours of operation?
It's going to be between 10 a.m. and 7 p.m.
Okay, very good, very good. Well, we don't want to ask the same question too. We encourage folks to use bicycles, we try to encourage the city to become a bicycle-friendly city. And the question is whether you're interested in having a bicycle rack, who some of you are.
Actually, we love one.
Okay, very good, so we'll note that. Okay, please stay around until the end of the meeting, and you'll know exactly what we'll do. And with that, we're going to close, I'm sorry, that's right. I moved too quickly. Any comments from the council? How about the public? Any comments on this new establishment coming up in Long Beach, item number two? With that, I'm going to close the hearing.
Okay, our third public hearing is continuation of the hearing for a warning to medical ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding fire protection and protection.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close the hearing, and I'm going to move right through the resolution itself.
This goes along with item number one, orange to mental ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding fire protection and protection.
Okay, just as a reminder, this amendment allows the city to create a position for a third assistant chief, which is an unfaked position within the fire department in order to continue best practice methods for the department. The chiefs of the departments have requested and recommended that. The commissioner concurs and recommends it as well, and as the manager, I do as well.
Okay. And are there any comments from the council? Any comments from the public on this third item, actually, on the fire department and for bringing in the additional chief? I think I see someone right there. Yes, please come forward. Mr. Bando, great, good to see you. Welcome, Mr. Bando.
Hello.
John Bando, just a question about the addition of this is actually not a zero-sum game to the budget. There is an expense when this person gets a vehicle, so that's not addressing this and what the expenses to add this, even though it's a volunteer position, it's still a vehicle, let's add, and insurance, gas, and that vehicle lots of luck to replace, going forward, that's going to require additional budgeting address, what makes that impact on the budget? We're advised it is zero impact as it was a vehicle available.
Yeah, that was saved last time, but that factors the question, why does the fire department have extra vehicles sitting in the lot that's being bought with taxpayer money? I'm just asking what the financial issue, because even if the vehicle's already on hand, at some point that vehicle has to be replaced, so there's now an additional vehicle being purchased that wouldn't have been without the position. I'm just asking for the financial, I'm not disputing the position, I'm looking for the financial impact.
Well, it seems to make sense that in a fire department, you have to have always a backup, and in this case, having the vehicle always available when one breaks down is an important thing to do. This, of course, brings this to the point where we'll be at 100% utilization of the vehicle.
I'm sure the commissioner of the department will have to. I'm on my way to this hearing. Well, that's really, I mean, from what I recall from the purchasing, we were pretty interested there in the $30,000, $40,000 range, if I recall correctly.
That's a good question.
So does that plus the whatever insurance, the medical insurance costs?
Yes, absolutely.
Commissioner Pennants, welcome.
Yes, thank you. We have a vehicle available that was actually donated to us by another fire department after standing that we have kept. It's a question, the vehicle being a question, certainly anything, obviously, there's minimal oil changes and servicing of the vehicle, but the vehicle is in service now, and we use it for members who go back and forth, fire school, for classes, and things, you know, but we have that vehicle available for additional chief. So the expense is minimal, yet really a full-time employee with no salary, no medical benefit, no retirement system payment, so, and as I said in the last meeting, nobody does it for the vehicle, believe me, it's not worth it. They do it because they love helping neighbors. Thank you.
Can I just ask one question? The vehicle is already insured.
That is correct.
Commissioner, just one little comment before Mr. Bando, but then I'll allow you to come back up to the mic. In scheduling this chief, how is it that you do the scheduling? You would do it, you would rotate for every two weeks? How would they be scheduled?
The chiefs carry pagers, and when they're available, they go on a walk, as well as they save all those hours in the chief's office. So the chiefs respond to calls 24 hours a day, seven days a week, when they're not working, when they're not out of town, but it is, you know, they coordinate with each other to make sure somebody is critically available to respond to calls.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Bando.
So that's not aggressive, but I guess the point is going forward, at some point, that vehicle does need to be replaced. There will be an expense that'll have to be added to the budget covered, unless some vehicles don't need it.
But the point will be.
That's the point.
Yeah, it's a point, well, thank you. Any other comments from the council? Sorry, I think I went through that. Any other comments from the public on this item, very important item? And with that, folks, we will close the hearing on this third item.
Mr. President, I offer that we vote on this item right now, there's some room in the floor.
Okay, motion on the floor?
I make a motion to hold the session.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, on this item, a second, okay.
I am warning the ordinance to medical ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding fire protection and protection. Would you swing a decision to decide?
I do.
Board, you have another time?
I will, yes.
That's really made up.
Yes.
And for the more?
Yes.
Vice President O'Malley?
Yes.
President Torres?
Well, I have to say that this is something that we're very proud of our firefighters, our first responders, both volunteer and theory, and my vote is a definite yes.
Our next item is a publication for the warning to medical ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding Ocean Beach Park.
Okay. Need a little background on this right now. This is item number four, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'm going to call our assistant corporation counsel off, and I'm going to give an overview. This amendment would allow for the sale of limited alcoholic beverages at the concession stand in case of the boardwalk pursuant to the strict terms and conditions to be placed in the concession leave for the city. I'd ask the assistant corporation counsel to give us a little overview.
Welcome, Mr. Kavinsky, good to see you.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm here to explain to you essentially the purpose of this law and how it would work in practice should the council approve.
Mr. Kavinsky, if you can speak a little closer to the mic.
Sure. I'm here to explain to you the purpose of the law and how it would work in practice should the council approve. The purpose of the law here is to maintain the currently existing prohibition on the sale, use, and consumption of alcohol in the Ocean Beach Park while allowing limited exceptions in areas where vendors have real estate leases with the city. Should the council approve of this ordinance, it would allow the city then to amend the individual leases in order to enable the vendors to sell alcohol, as well as allow the opportunity to impose certain restrictions on said sale. Should the council approve it, there would be a two-step process. The vendor must obtain a permit from the state liquor authority, and he must come to an agreement as far as lease amendments. And that's pretty much how it works. I'd like to ask the council if you all have any questions.
Actually, I do. You just mentioned about the vendor getting a license from the state liquor authority.
Yes.
Once a license is granted at a location, can you just describe what happens after that vendor may leave, or a lease is terminated, what happens to that license?
The licenses are transferable, and they stay with the location. However, if a new vendor should come in, they would still need to have a lease agreement with the city, as all these items are, all these areas rather, are city-owned properties. So there will always be that lease unless at some point in the future the city sells the property, which I'm sure will not happen if they're attached to the boardwalk.
Council, let me get this straight. When the permit is given for a liquor license, it's really to the brick and mortar? Is it, am I correct, am I reading that correctly?
That is accurate.
Okay. Are there any other comments from the council?
So all the restrictions that, you know, we've all seen them, that have been floated around out there, that some of the concessions or concessionaires are offering up, would be part of their lease agreements?
Correct.
So there could be within their lease that it could be withdrawn or pulled at any given time, the city decides it's not working?
The city could reserve the right as part of the lease agreement to withdraw the merchant's privileges of selling alcohol under the lease.
And would it redo every single year with the lease, or would they naturally run a five-year lease?
Well, there are five-year leases, however, the way this would work is we need to add a rider to the lease, and we can set really whatever terms and conditions we'd like in the rider. We could have it sunset in a year, we could have it run to the lease, there's, the options are limitless. We can be as restrictive or not restrictive as the city needs to be.
And we have more power to control it through the lease than rather within, because the ordinance just allows the city to negotiate to provide alcohol.
Well, we would undoubtedly have more power to do it through the lease. One of the reasons is it's much easier to amend the lease than it is to amend the code of ordinances. It would allow the administration to be responsive to concerns and respond to them swiftly. The second issue is the state is the true regulating body for liquor sales and restrictions of the sort. It might be preempted by state legislation if the council were to enact ordinances that regulate the sale and consumption of liquor and so forth. However, that would not be the case in a private agreement, which is a lease.
So in other words, if we put it on code ordinances, that is 25 and over versus a little beverage, that would be?
That would be preempted by state law, which says you have to be 21 years or over, it would be known for it, but we could put that on a lease agreement. Correct.
Mr. Kavinsky, I have to ask this question because I think that this is one question that many residents have posed to me. What are the liabilities to the city with regard to the, to this industry? Because it really technically brings your city government into the business of alcohol. And what are our responsibilities, legal responsibilities for them?
Well, Councilmember Torres, it only brings us in the industry in the sense that the city is an out-of-possession landlord. And if the city is an out-of-possession landlord, and there happen to be alcohol sales, there is a slew of case law in New York State. It's very difficult to impose liability on an out-of-possession landlord. It's not the city that's selling these beverages, it's the individual vendors. With that being said, our insurance carrier recommends they have a CGL, commercial general liability insurance policy of $2 million. We actually make them have a $3 million insurance policy. And should the council approve of this amendment, we would add in addition that they get liquor law legal liability coverage, and all of this while naming the city as an additional insurer.
Then I have to ask the next question, and I think you probably can expect me to pass this, and that is, security for this. Where does the city stand when someone gets on a hand? When someone says, "I want to have another drink," and of course, the vendor says, "You can't." What happens at that point? Do our police departments step in? Do they have private security to make sure that that regulation is adhered to?
Well, it would be likely a combination of both. I believe the concessionaires are volunteers to hire security to be present at each station. On top of that, it would be no different than any bar in the city of Long Beach having an issue with a patron. You have security present on site, and in addition, you call the police whenever there are any issues.
Okay, I have no more questions.
I just have a question. I just kind of trying to echo what some of the questions Councilman O'Malley had. He just mentioned that there were in the ordinance, certain restrictions that have been proposed could not necessarily be enforceable, but we believe that they'd be enforceable if there were lease agreements and it came to having the.
Right. There's a difference between us legislating and us being landlords. When we try and legislate around the field of alcohol consumption, that field has been entirely occupied by New York State. And when municipalities had attempted to be more restrictive than New York State in regulating liquor and alcohol sales, they've consistently been struck down. However, a private agreement is a different matter altogether. If they agree to these restrictions, the penalty to them would not lie with the state liquor authority, it would be under the lease, which could result in their eviction amongst other damages.
Do you know if other municipalities have done similar things? In putting restrictions into a lease?
I can't say that I've personally seen them, I have to imagine that it has occurred at some point.
Hang on a minute.
Can you say, Tom? I just have one more question for clarity. So this change would not allow alcohol on the boardwalk? It would be in restricted areas provided by the concessions that are slightly off the boardwalk?
I think that's the intent, is that we would negotiate that kind of term in their lease where the area would be restricted. As I said in the beginning, the primary purpose of drafting this law is maintaining the ban of alcohol use, possession, and sale throughout the entire Ocean Beach Park, except certain locations where vendors have real estate contracts with the city.
So the intent is that there be no grab and go, sort of like with sandwiches and stuff? So the intent is that there be no grab-and-go, sort of like with sandwiches and stuff?
Correct.
With the consumer beverages on site?
Yes.
And then beyond that?
Just have one quick follow-up question, Mr. Madoff. You've mentioned that these modifications would be done to each individual vendor's lease.
Yes.
So is it fair to say that different leases apply for different?
Well, from a purely administrative standpoint, when I originally drafted the commercial leases, we made them identical on purpose, and that's for use of administrations. So unless there's some, any special type of circumstance, from the administrative standpoint, I believe all the restrictions should be moved.
They could vary.
Any other questions from the council?
Yeah, I have one last question, and that is the area in which the, this liquor can be served. In the case where you have a concession that doesn't have an area, what happens in a case like that? That concession, does that concession still get approval?
Well, the way this amendment to the Code of Ordinances works is it makes that type of approval permissive. So if the city believes that a certain location is not suitable for alcohol sales, it's nothing obliging the city to amend the lease to allow to the alcohol sale.
I see, I see. You know, because that's a question that I get all the time. What happens in certain places where you don't have an area where people can drink alcohol? And I appreciate that answer. Okay, if there are any more comments from the council, we're going to open this up to the public. We will begin with our concessionaires first. Yes, Ms. Gina Bradish. Good to see you, Ms. Bradish.
Good evening, councilmembers. Gina Bradish, New York City.
Just put the mic closer to you.
I'm here on behalf of the concessionaires. I want to thank you all for allowing this public forum on our establishments. I know that with February break, it's difficult to gather supporters to come in our favor, and I would like to thank everyone who's here in support of us tonight. With that being said, we knew that this was going to be an issue that we would be faced with. So we decided to have petitions for those in favor that may not be able to contend. Both written and online petitions, we have 1,376 signatures of people who are in favor of our establishments proceeding with the license. Another concern that was expressed to us was the safety of our swimmers with the addition of alcohol to the establishments. I spoke with Chief Gillespie, and he told me that Long Beach has not had a drowning in 12 years while guards were in duty. Any issues that patrol has had, the number of lifeguards were not unused. I'm sure that the city and Chief Gillespie have started efforts to let people to eliminate that. And eliminate that by extending hours regarding their duties. There are many people who do patron our beaches that do not follow the laws of alcohol and enjoy their cocktails on the beaches. So this is an issue that our guards have to deal with on an everyday basis. And with no drownings in 12 years, that is pretty amazing. I've also gathered the statistics of the drownings pertaining to the alcohol use on the eastern seaboard provided by the United States Life Saving Database from 2011 to 2016. Out of the 16 drownings that have occurred, one was due to alcohol consumption. The next topic that we'd like to discuss is Long Beach Aware has been in opposition with us from the very beginning that we met them. We understand that they are here to fight underage drinking and applaud all of their efforts. We accept strict guidelines for ourselves as establishments to combat and fight the underage drinking in Long Beach. Yet, 2015 national statistics show that 48% of adolescents from 12 to 20 received their alcohol from someone's house, and 36% received it from their own home. And a New York State statistic shows that 53.4% of 12 to 20-olds drank at someone's house, and 30.3% drank at their own homes, proving that restaurants are not the enemy in this fight against underage drinking. I have the statistics for all of this for my residents. Also, I'd like to bring to your attention that Long Beach Aware has gone on camera with News 12's spaceship and stated that our numbers in Long Beach are higher by 20% than Nassau County in New York State. I've reached out to the New York State Office of Alcoholism and Substance Abuse Services, which is also known as Oasis, which Long Beach Aware considers our number-one resource on their page. Their email that I received this morning states that they do not have any data to cover any of this.
Ms. Bradish, we appreciate it. And if you can turn, particularly you mentioned something regarding signatures on a petition. We'd like to see that, and if you have the data that...
This is the signature, this is the statistics, and this is Long Beach Aware's page along with the email.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Bradish. Thank you so much. Before I open it up again, I just to be fair, is there anyone here representing from WARE that can speak on behalf of the organization for the prevention of underage drinking? And I've seen Miss Vining, good to see you, Miss Vining. I just wish that we could make some of the meetings that you have, and I know it's difficult.
I'm sorry to let it go out.
Please do.
For my time? This is all the research that one of me did.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't expect you to read all of that, ma'am. I just wanted to tell you that the confluence of research, which is not all over. Our role is bring to you the latest science research, everything we can to irate youth and abuse of alcohol and everything else.
Before you continue, can we bring your volume up a little bit? Because I know that you may have a little difficulty with this.
I don't think I can get any closer.
No, I know. That's why I'm asking you to bring the volume up.
Just bear with us, folks. We just want to make sure that everyone hears the presentation that we've been doing.
Okay, any better?
Yeah, a little better, yes.
Thank you. Sorry, that's my voice. Anyway, our mission is to give you the latest research. We are not the decision makers in all of you guys, okay? We are the experts in the field of substance abuse. We are, we do cite statistics. I can tell you just to piggyback this second. The reason the New York State Amazes cannot release statistics is that is guaranteed they give to all school districts that once the data is gathered, so that they can gather the data, they return it to each individual school district. And they can do a state-by-county comparison. It's up to the individual district that gets the results to do the comparison to the state and county. They cannot, will not, it's not that they don't have the data. We all have the data. You have to use it appropriately in your district or in ways that simply doesn't serve it. So when we say that we are 20% above the county and the state, please check out our website, we are. It's not something we're very proud of, it's something we're worried about and should be worried about. We have now here the comparison data. It's viable, you will never get an answer from Oasis. For this, because Oasis will not be able to survey the future. You know, it's the kind of, the superintendents don't want their school districts to look down because it's not how they get anything else. Really bottom line, they make the promise to the district that we will not release individual data except to that district. That's it. The research you have here is by the CDC, by the World Health Organization, by the U.S. Surgeon General's report, all of which, all of which connect the outlet density, vessels pumping up deals, the number of places you can purchase alcohol, directly connected to the amount of underage drinking that goes on in the community. We are in no way saying, nor have we ever said, that these four venues would be selling to minors. We applaud the business plan. The problem is, we are at a state, we're at a place in our community where 68% of our 11th graders in 2015 said they drank within the past month. And two, almost to 48%, out of our 11th and 12th graders in 2015 reported binge drinking. That's five or more drinks in a period of one sitting in two. That's just unacceptable rates. We're, in the process, we're coming to you as the arbiters, as the keepers of our community's safety. The Code of Ordinances was put into effect in order to protect the health and welfare of the entire community over time. The change you are proposing is a sea change. There is no doubt about that. And that change, I guess, calls into question for us, what is the benefit to the city of Long Beach in doing this? What is the benefit to most of your residents in the community? Yes, you have petitions, but where does this people live? They're taking on COVID risk, and I don't want to get into the give and take and the back and forth. You need to decide that this change will forever change, as Ms. Kaminsky said, the license goes with the roots and borders of your life?
Yes.
So the reality is, forget it, you may all not be in these seats in five years, or in 10 years, or in three years, and then...
Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Vining, we need to up off for other folks a bit. But I do have a question, part of the issue. In the statistics that you've mentioned, only because I, that's part of my background. I'm a statistician, an educationist. What is the reliability of that correlation that you're saying between adult drinking and underage drinking?
We're not even going to retain the correlation between the number of places in a community, in a zip code actually, according to the CDC, has a direct correlation to underage drinking within that zip code.
I see.
Okay, that is, and that's according to the CDC, according to the World Health Organization, and according to the U.S. Surgeon General.
I see. This is a geographic analysis, is it?
Exactly.
I see.
And I have not made that the best combined of the science systems we have.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Vining. Thank you so much. And, okay, with that, folks, are there any other comments from the public on this? Item number four, and then several, these gentlemen, please go forward, sir. We just need you to state your name, and we want to welcome you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Vincent Lees. I live in 418 East Hudson Street. It's just a response to all the percentages and, what would I call it, the alternate facts that have been probably thrown around here today. I'm not in disagreement about the 68% of Long Beach High School students reported in 2015 survey that they drank alcohol. But according to the national percentages, 68% of the 12th graders have tried alcohol in the United States. 37.4% of the 12th graders drank in the last month. And 23.5% of the 10th graders drank in the last month as well. Is it a local problem, but it seems to be a national problem as well? So my question is, where are the kids consuming alcohol? In one of our local restaurants? No. In front of the convenience store where they may be bonding in? No. Underneath the boardwalk? Not anymore, because I used to do that a long time ago. The wall stops. I'll put my money on it that this alcohol consumption is taking place in the residential homes. So let's not hold our businesses accountable for our kids' experimentation with alcohol, but as parents, let's keep a more logical eye. Again, as far as I said, I've been teaching for 16 years. I have two little kids that are under three, and I know when they grow up, they will know about alcohol education. And I know that there will be no kids drinking in my house. And as parents, like I just said, we have to be mindful of this. Let's not hold our business, I'm not going, just, I'm not going to some place to have a great burger and, I look at my writers, two 16-year-olds pouting beers. That's not happening. It's happening at our homes. So once again, think about the businesses, it's not them. We should be more mindful of parents. Thank you, guys.
I think what I'd like to do is to ask, is there someone here representing the Chamber of Commerce? Very important, if someone can come up from the Chamber of Commerce to speak on the chamber's behalf. Mr. Lynch?
Good evening. Thank you for hearing everyone's opinion tonight. Very important, it's part of the government. And it makes your job a lot easier when people come out, because I think what's been said about this topic is somewhat misconstrued, is that, and sometimes that narrative gets driven when the true story isn't out. The fact is that people are well under the impression that the boardwalk is going to be, there's booze filled and cups all over the place, and that's not the case. The city has a ordinance in place, no open alcoholic beverages on the beach and on the boardwalk. That's going to remain in place. With regards to Ms. Vining's topic of statistics, I would like to say that the important thing here is that in a number of news outlets, Ms. Vining stated there are 93 businesses in Long Beach, or 90 or better, that serve alcohol. And that's factually untrue. I'd like to submit these, that there are 73, two of which are closed for renovation. So there's 73 businesses now that hold licenses in Long Beach. And if we're going to talk about statistics and it counts on people's livelihoods, we should be pretty accurate and factual. In addition to that, I'd like to talk about the 20% rate that is higher in Long Beach than it is in Nassau County State. That rate is based upon population. As of 2016, Nassau County's population is based on 4,000 people per square mile. Long Beach is 10,000 people per square mile. So naturally, the rate is going to be driven up. That's just factual. The statistics are going to move up by the density of the town. So I would ask you to take that into consideration. Now, as far as the other thing, you know, the chamber always wants to see businesses opening and flourishing, and that's an important part. And it's important that the other businesses survive too. And these businesses that are on the boardwalk want to work with the businesses on Park Avenue in the West End to make sure that they can cross-promote each other. You know, everybody's in this pack together, and it's important that they all work together. It's difficult every time a new business opens, it's going to be somebody else's bottom line. But the bottom line here is that the city sent out a survey when they started this, after the boardwalk was built, and they were going to duck these concessions. And the overall majority of people said they wanted to see restaurants on the boardwalk. So this is nothing new. This has been talked about for years. So the point there is, they need to move forward. The city knows new about this. There's no new surprise here. They're looking to move forward with their licenses. So we ask that you vote on it tonight. There's going to be many discussions, many meetings to go forward. But let them start their paperwork to get this done. It's only fair, it was something that was, that's been talked about, it's not new. So we ask that you take care of this tonight, and I'm just taking one for.
Now, I'm going to continue to open it up to the public. We're going to go on this side with Mr. Lester and then Mr. Banachek. Glad you gentlemen are here. Thank you. Good to see you, Mr. Lester. Roy Lester, send me to your seat. I really don't quite understand what this change is about. There are a couple of things that really frustrate me about it. Number one is how an RFP could have been put out to the businesses saying you could serve alcohol when the law, the ordinance clearly said you can't. Why was that done? I've asked and asked, and I've never gotten an explanation. You know, Brian, how could you do that?
Well, continue, I'll let you do it.
But this change is not about improving the quality of life for the people of Long Beach. It's not about that. But, hey, who doesn't want a drink with dinner? Let me tell you, there are a lot of people who can get through dinner without a drink, and they don't even necessarily want it. This isn't about watching the sun set with a drink. These, what these establishments are asking is to be open all day to 10 o'clock at night. The sun doesn't set at 10 o'clock at night. It's way gone past that. It's not about that. It's about making money. And I understand, everybody wants to make money, but why do it when it affects the quality of life? Now, you know, I'm a lifeguard. I've been a lifeguard for 40 years. To say that alcohol doesn't affect the safety is a joke, and it's clearly said by somebody who doesn't, who wasn't a lifeguard. You look at the statistics, we're talking about the statistics. There were, the USLA statistics, there were 94,000 rescues last year. 94,000. You don't go by drownings, in the guarded area there were. Granted, there were 13 drownings, but that only says because of how great the lifeguards are. And hope that 20% were from alcohol, according to the USLA statistics. I am telling you, from being a lifeguard for 40 years, it's a lot more than that. Alcohol and the ocean don't mix, especially in the beginning of the year when the water's cold and people drink and then they go in. And let me tell you, made, it's still in the 50s and low 60s, and that's dangerous with alcohol. But then again, we also have the boardwalk. You want people drinking alcohol on the boardwalk and then riding their bikes or walking around? We have enough problems with people walking right into bike lanes right now, or whatever the middle part is called. And now we're going to be giving people alcohol and sending them out. And granted, I know they said, well, they're only going to have it to certain people. But when you're amending this ordinance, you're opening up the door. You're opening it up. And you look at the ordinance, and as the ordinance says, it's amended, what is it, 1844? So 1844 is what says you can't carry open containers. Well, that basically is going out the door. And yes, I know you guys say, well, the lease can put certain restrictions on, but I've already seen it. The problem with this is this is coming from people who contribute to the city council. No question about it. And I understand, because they're making money on this type of thing. So they contribute, and ordinances can be changed, and leases can be changed. And why, it doesn't benefit our kids. Mr. Lester, we appreciate, and certainly is a point well taken. I'm going to remind the audience that we have to try to control ourselves, whether it's something we don't want to hear or we love hearing. It's very important to keep order here. And, you know, making comments, making noises, is not appropriate. And we want to be able to remind everyone that we have to treat each other with respect here. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lester, and certainly good to see you.
Thanks.
Okay. With that, folks, I have Mr. Banachek. Good to see you, Mr. Banachek. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Stuart Ferg, I'm from Green Bay, St. Louis. I've lived in Long Beach for, during our 30 years. I raised both my kids here, and I felt that alcohol, trust me, they did not go into bars, restaurants, theaters, or home drinking. That being said, I have been a former and current member of the Zoning Board, and every time... and every time somebody wants to open up a bar, a restaurant, a tattoo parlor, I've seen people come, come up here and say, it's gonna be the end of the world, as you know. I remember the tattoo parlor, there's gonna be bikers and drunk dealers hanging up on the front. You go by there, there's like one or two people inside. I remember when they were forming the grounds and they walked to the bar. And, you know, hundreds of people here, it's gonna be the end of the world. If you look at every beach area in the South Shore, going from Coney Island out to Hampton Beach, there's successful restaurants that serve alcohol on the beach. I mean, I've waited for thirty years to see a restaurant open on the boardwalk. Why should we not allow ourselves of the same kind of business and draw it? If you go to Sea of Park, the beach area, thousands of people go to that beach, because this restaurant, they serve alcohol, and it's, it's not a wild, crazy scene. I mean, you see the largest volleyballs on the, on, I think in New York, it's held there every summer. So, I appreciate when people are saying that kids and drinking. I have my own kids and I understand it perfectly. But, you know, everybody complains of this anti-businesses in the city, but retail is a really rough grind in Long Beach. The only businesses that really succeed are the restaurant businesses. And, you know what, it's a short season for them, whether on the boardwalk or even in town, you know, you do business for four or five months out of the year and then everything drops dead. And I, I could fully appreciate, you know, needing to maximize that period of time to do business. I don't think it's gonna be a bad situation. I don't think you can see people stumbling down the boardwalk. I don't think you're gonna see kids buying ten, twelve, or fifteen dollar, you know, like, uh, fruit concoction drinks on the boardwalk. They can afford it, you know? And, and if you get that much, I think it's great, because we really have to encourage business. And like I said, retail is very hard in Long Beach. I used to be in retail, and this is a, a tough one. The restaurant business is the only business that can really make it here. So, we should encourage it.
And Mr. Banachek and I served both on the zoning board a number of years ago, and, uh, yeah, I remember these issues, they come up back then. Uh, are there any other comments from the public? I'm gonna go to this gentleman and then the next one right behind you. Okay. Welcome, sir. Just state your name and sort.
Mr. Council, thank you for allowing me to be here. My name is Mike Mukasey, um, Eighteen Curly Street. Been a Long Beach resident for ten years now. Uh, my family and I enjoy the boardwalk year-round. We've enjoyed the different establishments that are up there. These locally-owned businesses did an exceptional job this past summer, in my opinion. My family, friends and I, we loved the opportunity, just looking forward to this next summer, to ride our bikes up on the boardwalk, enjoy a frozen drink or a beer, while watching the sun set after a day work. I do have confidence that these businesses can serve these frozen drinks and beer in a tasteful and responsible manner, some of these other gentlemen have been speaking about tonight. In my opinion, allowing these local business owners to sell these spirits will give them a greater chance of success and allow them to remain in business, which I think is very important. These businesses attract more people to our boardwalk, which contribute to the revival of our city, going against what some other people may have said. I do think that this is very important to the revival of our city. Boardwalk is on the news all the time. I turn on the TV, it's on Channel Four, Channel Seven. You know, if any of these establishments were to go out of business, you know, I think we all, especially you guys, city council members, what capable new business owner would realistically wanna make a bid to develop and invest money into one of these spaces? These current business owners should be allowed to sell certain alcohol within certain hours. I understand that argument, to increase their chances at success. So I fully support these business owners, um, obtaining an SLA license as a young couple. My wife is pregnant, I'm off at Eighteen Curly Street. You know, and I see the future of the city, and I think that this is gonna be a positive thing. So thank you, appreciate it.
Welcome again, and it's, uh, we just need your name for the record.
Hello, I'm Steve Camden, committed on Ten West Beach Street. Some jukebox, jukebox from the boardwalk. Uh, first off, I have to say right away, I have to commend the boardwalk people and the concession stands that are up there. They have been run excellently, I go there all the time, I'm at the riptides all the time. I know the owner, Brian, who does an excellent job running this business. I've been very impressed, had to listen to him, watching him run that business. I have no qualms with him as a neighbor running that business. I do have questions about what's being proposed, though, that's confusing to me. Uh, when I look at the number four amendment, or, did we have here? It says, "Any restaurant, lunch, or stand situated adjacent to the north side of the boardwalk." Okay, what's a stand mean? The word stand, I don't understand the definition of that.
Steve, why don't you finish up and then, uh...
Well, I would finish up, but the last time, he asked what the RFP, and who decided that, and he didn't answer that question. So if I got any questions to answer as I say it, or else it ends up not being answered. I've seen that twice, right?
I can assure you that I know, uh, this is corporate council, and we'll answer your questions.
Okay, then let's first, we give Roy's question. Who, who actually said, "Okay, that we have beer in the RFP"? Who allowed that? That was the first question.
Steve, I'll happily answer that question at the end, but I think you have three minutes to speak, and then...
Those are important questions. I'll stop with those, but then, that's another one to do. I can hand you my questions, there are only four of them. So you can answer them as you want, but I'm scared of what happened before.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? The second question is, okay, in the, just, I've got my question, yeah, this is just because I'm reading this. The second thing says, "Or, on the Ocean Beach Park." So this isn't even limited to the north side of the boardwalk. This is about me drinking on the beach. What about that? Was that the intent of this? It says it right in... It does say it, second line, under A, "Or, the Ocean Beach Park." This is a park. The reason why they use the word "park" is "family-oriented area to enjoy yourself with family." The concept is boardwalk and beach, it's a park. That was in 'oh seven, when I was on the planning advisory board, we went away from commercialization of the boardwalk and went towards it. I think it's wonderful if five bathrooms are available on the boardwalk. I think bathrooms are wonderful, and I thought the idea of having a concession stand in the middle bathroom is great. Sorry, this is not now a middle bathroom. Brian has done a great job in that business, I am proud of him for what he did. But this is not the intent of what we talked about in 'oh seven. The plan, the planning advisory committee board that I'm on, for two years, we've been having discussions around town about what we wanna do. Why wasn't this discussed? For two years now, you've been doing a thirty-year plan for the city, are you kidding me? Come on. You ask this kind of meeting, you ask this to participate, and then this is thrown out now? What was the true year of studying done for? Are, are these not legitimate questions?
No, they're legitimate, we appreciate what you're saying. Absolutely, you can do it.
Okay. Okay, so my question is, who authorized RFP? I figured it's Rob. I will stand here, Mike, a little, another person, I know, and demand a little more time.
Can you submit those questions to me?
Okay, I'll read them quickly, then I'll submit them. Okay?
Okay.
What, what public issues do you know about? And does the city council plan on continuing commercialization of our beach and boardwalks away from the adopted plan of two thousand seven?
Very good. So let me answer the first two questions that I'm gonna ask you, this is the corporation council, to answer the, uh, the technical questions about the legislation. First of all, regarding the RFP, uh, so the city issued an RFP, uh, before last season, uh, in which it stated, and I'm paraphrasing because I don't have the language in front of me, uh, that, um, an option would be the potential of alcohol at the city's option. The city then decided not to pursue that at that time. Had we done so, we'd be having this discussion last year. The answer to your second question regarding the, uh, the public input is, I'm holding in front of me the boardwalk comfort survey, uh, conversation survey, um, from before the boardwalk, uh, concession went into being. This is the phase two of, of the boardwalk survey, as you may recall. Um, and I think a previous speaker alluded to it. And, um, in that public engagement, which was facilitated by Sustainable Long Island, what was asked was, "What do you wanna see on the boardwalk?" And, and residents were given the opportunity, um, to weigh in at that time. So we did not do, you're right, uh, other than this public hearing, there was not a specific public hearing about, um, the concept of alcohol on the boardwalk. However, there was certainly, um, ample public engagement as to what would be on the boardwalk in general. Right, we, we didn't necessarily have to have food, food up there, right? There could have been, uh, more retail, or there could have been, uh, anything else.
Well, according to a stand, a stand could be a kid with an ice cream cart going down the beach selling beer. I mean, there's nothing defined as, as wrong. What's preventing the ice cream carts from now selling beer?
That's your third question, and that's the, and the answer to that. I know that, uh, this is a real talent, he has the answer to that, and you go to speak to that right now.
Thank you very much.
Okay, gentlemen of the council, with respect to the language concerning restaurant, luncheonette, or stand, uh, this is a pre-existing, uh, part of the code that was amended and tailored to suit the situation here, which is to permit limited sale and consumption of alcohol on the Ocean Beach Park. Now, with respect to defining restaurant, luncheonette, or stand, uh, principles of legislative interpretation say, where it isn't explicitly defined in the code, the common meaning is applied to it. However, the critical part here, which may answer all the questions, is the city can only permit them, subject to the terms and conditions of their lease with the city. Somebody pushing a cart does not have a real estate lease with the city. Uh, the only entities that have leases with the city are those people who are occupying the concession stands on the boardwalk, as well as a stand in the city. Um, with respect to the Ocean Beach Park north boundary issue, uh, we wanted to make sure that we included the concession stand buildings, and the boundaries of the Ocean Beach Park extend some feet away from the actual boardwalk itself. So we wanted to make sure that we were inclusive of that entire area legally. So, I, I, I think that answers the question, unless the council would like further clarification.
Do we need any further clarification?
I, I would just ask for this, purposes of being really blunt. So you're saying that people can't just roam the boardwalk or the beach with alcohol?
Correct. Nor can somebody with a stand or a cart simply appear and begin selling alcohol. They would need permission from the city, number one, and number two, they would have to have a lease with the city. And that is what is explicitly stated in the first subpart A of the law. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councilor. Uh, I'd like to bring up another concession here before we go further. Uh, is Mr. Sullivan here? Uh, and Mrs. Sullivan, I see. Either, either one of you can come up.
She's got it.
Okay.
Go together, go together.
Welcome. We just need you to state your name for the record.
I am Kelly Sullivan, and I just signed a new lease from site, uh, three twenty-one West Walnut. Um, I'm a resident, I'm a local business owner. In fact, I have my own business here in Long Beach, and my husband also has a business here. He's one of the owners of Beach Local Cafe. Um, I think it's pretty safe to say that I'm, I'm fully invested in the wellness of this community. Um, I'm also a sister of the ladies A O H, and I also volunteer my time to serve as a board member of the Chamber of Commerce. We've gone above and beyond here to make sure that we suggest that, that the suggested program addresses the major concerns we've encountered when speaking with the community. Just so we're all on the same page tonight, I wanted to listen to those suggestions again. Beverage service will be restricted to twenty-three and older. We're gonna maintain restricted hours of operation at a ten p.m. closing time. There will be security guards to maintain safety. There will be no outdoor alcohol signage or advertising. We wanna make sure that the boardwalk stays looking great, guys. Signage stating open container laws at all concession exits. Enforce open container fines on the boardwalk. All employees to be of legal service age and tip certified. I just wanna make it very clear to everybody, we're not trying to open up nightclubs on the boardwalk. There's not even going to be a bar in any of these establishments, it's cable service only. We've heard some suggestions that this is gonna be tabled tonight because there's not enough time or the people are out of town. But we all know that this conversation has been going on for months, a year now. Um, we also know that the process of obtaining an SLA license is, it's gonna take a long time. So I'm asking you guys to please vote on this tonight, we're running out of time here. Um, just for the record, I just, I just wanna state that I am in favor of the concessions, uh, obtained there.
And, uh, and first, because we have two different establishments, Mr. Sullivan, would you mind to say something? Welcome again, just state your name for the record.
Uh, Sean Sullivan, three twenty-one West Walnut, and I'm the owner of Beach Local Cafe. Um, just a reminder, justice. Thank you, guys, for holding this tonight, and everyone for coming out. Um, I just wanted to address, right here, I'm reading from the SLA's website. Uh, can a bar or nightclub transfer their license to another owner? Licenses may not transfer a license in the way that transfer is commonly understood. Licenses may not be sold or given from one person or company to another. The SLA's licensing bureau uses the term "transfer" and "new", uh, and new applications, only to differentiate between applications for establishment that is currently licensed and one that is looking to be licensed. Um, so, I appreciate that corporate council did a lot of work on this, but what he said was wrong. When our, when our businesses go away, that doesn't mean that the license stays with the place. The SLA evaluates licenses on the basis of three things. The principle, the premises, and the funding. When a, if you scroll down, and this is all from community Q and A on, on the website, when you scroll down, it says, bear with me here, uh... It says that when a business ceases to exist, that their license must be turned into the SLA, and any new applicant that seeks to get a liquor license in New York State must go through the same process. So there's a narrative being pushed here that when our contracts are up, the next guy just walks into this, but that's not true. And if you take the time to go on the SLA website, it's all laid out there for us. Um, beyond that, one thing I can agree with Roy is that the bike lane should be marked. You know, be, beyond that, I just ask that, you guys, we, you know, we've been having this conversation for months and months now. Um, I feel like we've gone out of our way to engage the community, and, I mean, look at all the people that are out here tonight that came out to, you know, on both sides. So, uh, for our side, if everybody who is supporting us could just stand up and show the council that you're here to support us, that would be fantastic. I asked that you guys vote tonight, and all of these people on both sides came out to see what was gonna happen. I asked that you do this now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Someone along here, okay? Uh, the gentleman first here, and then the, uh, Mr. Art, Art C. said that you'd be second, Mr. Art C. We'll start with the first gentleman here. Come up, come forward. Patrick, we'll be right with you.
Uh, being the council, um, my parents are skating, I live at seven oh four West Walnut Street. I have spoken before the council, I've done it before, I don't know all of you, you know me, how you doing, guys? Um, I wanted to just bring up the fact that, you said earlier, President Torres, that you'd like to see businesses thrive. To allow these people to have their beverage licenses so that they give the patients the same vision afforded to any establishment that sells, that does dining in the city of Long Beach would be fair. Simple as that. Um, it's funny, I was gonna bring up the... It's funny, I was going to bring up the fact that you had instances where applicants, when they get a license, especially with a license, and some of you don't have that right, okay? Unfortunately, people will be said, oh, they turn a blind eye. They don't pay attention to identifying people, making sure they're of age to drink, if they walk into the establishment and they've already had too much to drink. But I can tell you that seeing the way that these new establishments are going to be set up, I don't think that's going to be a problem. I don't know everyone here. I have met Mr. Bradish. I don't know all of them. I know Sean Sullivan. I know his wife, Kelly Phyllis Tenchus, okay? And Sean is, Sean, we before, from different establishments that he worked in, where I was with him when he would turn people away who didn't have proper ID. He didn't want to bend the rules. He didn't want to make anything seem like it's going to be outlandish. So I would submit that I don't think himself or the other applicants tonight, they deserve a fair chance to show the fact that they're going to follow these rules. They're going to be very diligent to making sure that these places are not a bar in nature. They're a restaurant where patrons have the option to have a drink with their meal, okay? And as for some of the comments that were made earlier, you know, it's funny, but someone said that, you know, alcohol and swimming don't mix. Neither does alcohol and drinking. I mean, this has a lot to do with discipline, okay? Discipline is not the enemy of the beauty aspect. Or vice versa. So if people are going to go out, have a drink, they're going to be the ones responsible. But these owners of the new establishments are definitely going to go out of their way to make sure by example that no one is going to wind up getting hurt. I can't see any of them letting a person leave their premises with an alcoholic beverage, walking to some poor guy at the booth who was supposed to check to make sure they have a pass to go on the beach, and now have them in an awkward situation where they see someone and have to say, oh, you're holding, you know, a beverage, or you're holding an alcoholic beverage. Okay? That's not going to happen. I don't see it happening at all. So I submit that myself, my wife, who's going to present tonight, they all, I think this is a great idea for these people to have these businesses. I wish that you would vote tonight, and I wish that you would vote yes. Thank you very much.[738.12][738.12](APPLAUSE).
This is Patrick Artest, and then we'll go to this side of the room, back. Welcome to our seats. Good to see you.
How you doing? Welcome, Mr. Diamond. How are you? Welcome to the council. I'm in favor of this, okay? It'll bring many jobs for the city, revenue for the city, and at the age, I'm here 58 years. 58 years. When I drank as a minor, an adult brought me to live there. An adult, okay? I've seen the bars in the West End, they don't let anybody out without any alcohol. They got dog eyes, they got everything. They'll have to contain these people. You got the other career. They got to look like the license rider on the beach. I go home and spend $12 for a beer, and I go to another establishment restaurant, spend $6 a beer. $8, whatever it costs me to be. I prefer to do that. I mean, she'd be a no-brainer at all. She'd go voting yes. Thank you.[806.82][806.82](APPLAUSE).
We have the young lady with the red sweater, and then the gentleman behind her, and then we'll go to the third person there, too. Welcome to our city council meeting. We just made your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Megan O'Donnell. I live at 65 Georgia Avenue in the West End. I have no fancy to pay state, so I don't really, didn't really prepare anything. I am a mother of two children in the Long Beach School District, and I am in favor of these guys getting their license and being able to sell beer and alcohol on the boardwalk. So, I'm excited.
The gentleman behind, the young lady was sitting. I guess not, then we'll, okay, the gentleman on the side, and then the young lady with the red. Make sure you get your, and then we'll get to this side of the class. Welcome, Jerry. Welcome to our city council.
My name is Roger Field. I live on East Penn Street. I've been living in Long Beach for over 30 years. The reason my family and I moved to Long Beach was because the boardwalk, we love it. But this is a wrong move. It's taking us in the wrong direction. I cycle in the summer at least twice a day. I go out early morning. I go out usually in the evening with my wife. It's become almost impossible to ride a boardwalk because there is zero enforcement. There are people skateboarding, there are people smoking, there are people doing drugs. I've never yet seen a police officer on the boardwalk after the hour five o'clock, and I'm out there constantly. This is a negative move, and I'm absolutely against it.
Thank you, Mr. Field. And good luck. Thank you. You're a lady. (APPLAUSE). Natalie Goggins. Welcome to the city council. Could you state your name for the record?
Good evening. My name is Natalie Goggins, and I live in Long Beach. I'm here tonight to tell you that I have serious safety concerns about allowing alcohol to be served on the boardwalk. I am 15 years old, and during the summer, I work on the beach. Most days, I ride my bike on the boardwalk, whether for leisure or as a way to get to work. Currently, there are safety issues concerning the unmarked bike lanes. The addition of alcohol will most likely lead to more safety issues. Selling alcohol on the boardwalk may lead to fights and possible drownings, creating further safety issues on the beach and boardwalk. Also, there are already many places that serve alcohol in Long Beach, so selling alcohol on the boardwalk is unnecessary. The boardwalk is an area for younger people to hang out, and selling alcohol on the boardwalk will increase the likelihood of teen access. The boardwalk is a place where family-friendly activities, such as concerts and movies, take place. Families, including children, ride their bicycles on the boardwalk to these events. I do not understand how alcohol could positively consist with these aspects of the boardwalk. It is important to acknowledge that the concession stands are not enclosed and are very much attached to the boardwalk activities. Considering the vast amount of boardwalk activity at any given time, it will be very easy to walk away from the concession stand with alcohol onto the boardwalk and the beach. Last year, the city council banned smoking from the boardwalk and beach. Why are we now considering allowing the sale of alcohol? It is inconsistent with providing a safe and healthy environment on our beach and boardwalk. In closing, because this is the holiday week, it is the wrong time to be taking a vote on this amendment, since many families who may want to be heard are away. Additionally, I believe the city should be conducting a public survey, like it did on issues affecting the public, such as parks, dogs on the beach, the building of the boardwalk and concession stands. The issue before you tonight is very important to the residents, and they should be given the opportunity to be heard before the members of the city council vote. Thank you for your time and consideration.[1078.58][1078.58](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I appreciate you. Now, we just arrived here this month, and to make such an eloquent comment, we commend you very much. Now, in respect to elected officials and former elected officials, we have someone in our audience that I don't hear from, Mr. Harvey Weesenberg. Please come forward. Of course, when you're sitting, saying hello, go over there. My fans there, Mr. Weesberg. Please, if you take a little walk until you're, you know, fearless. Yes. His friend is won't talk until he's had the mic. Yeah. Welcome, Harvey. Good to see you.
Thank you for the opportunity. Congratulations on the job that you have, Mr. Diamond. Welcome. I've been here longer than that of the past 60 years. I've been here eight-something years. Dedicated my life to one city, and I have most respect for the institution and the obligation and responsibility that you have. But I also feel, I'm sort of upset, because I know most of the people in the audience, and I don't want to see people who are neighbors and friends against each other. They differ, but they have strong feelings to be heard. I'm here to say to you, in my knowledge and my life experience, that you're elected to sit up here and make a decision. I can reflect going back, it wasn't too many years ago, when I had legislation and we had an opportunity, the $98 million to do beach restoration on our beach. And guess what? We had an audience, we had a lot of people, all going up here with one video in mind, that people are going to drown, the sand is going to be plowed, there are sharks are going to be here, terrible, terrible things are going to happen. And we, they voted it down. The New York Times came and says, how could they do that? Well, they didn't want a dune on the beach. And I took the reporter, and I just took him into the boardwalk, and I went to New York Avenue, I said, look at this, 17 feet of sand. It's a natural dune, and it's here. And the reality is, we had a great opportunity. It went by, and now, in the future, as we all know, everybody pushed that. We were the only place in the country that turned down that much money when everybody was fighting for it. I don't want to see something like that happen here. These people are not making a decision. They're giving you their feelings. But this is not the total community. And I'm saying to you, make a decision. That's what we were elected to do. If you live here, and you feel in your heart what's best for the city, that's what you vote for. It's not somebody coming up here because I'm on both sides of the issue. I also know, and due respect to Roy, 60 years, I've been a lifeguard on a beach. I'm not telling you what to do, but I'm going to ask you to do something that I told my kids many years ago. It's the reward greater than the risk involved. And it's the issue about money, or is the issue about people? And when you take that into consideration, you make a decision that you think what's best for you and our city. It's still the city of all people here. The diversity, as you know, is great. The needs are great. The pleasures are different, but the answer really is, what's best for the people in the city. And I ask you to take the responsibility, do your job, and vote. Good luck.[1174.12][1174.12](APPLAUSE).
We appreciate everyone coming out, and particularly representatives such as Mr. Weesenberg. Back there, I see a hand, and then we'll go to the front here. Okay. You'll have to excuse me, I can't see too well back there, but I believe this is, Mr. Elmore? Yes. Welcome.
Ray Elmore, 560 West Broadway. I wasn't planning on really speaking on this issue, but I had the pleasure after the polar bears, as I've volunteered as a lifeguard, to go to Lola's. And the owner of Lola's kind of sat down and spoke about this issue. And his concern was, you know, he had his business. It's a great business. I mean, he does tremendous charity work, opening up his doors to the wounded warriors, the polar bears, so many great charities he just gives great deals to. He's a great owner. He's a longtime owner of this town. And the idea is, I fully understand, to be a successful business, if you have a restaurant, you got to sell alcohol. I also believe that our public can handle it, and our boardwalk is safe. But I will say that I'm not so sure by allowing it so these other owners can make more money. I do believe it's going to be at the expense of a place like Lola's. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elmore.[1204.12][1204.12](APPLAUSE). We have, they're sitting here in the front, and then we'll just go back to this side here. We'll get everyone, everyone will have a chance to be able to say something. Welcome, Ms. Edelson. Good to see you.
Hi, good evening. I really wasn't going to speak, but one of the things that I didn't want to say was, I'm urging the council to vote tonight. And the reason I'm urging the council to vote tonight is because I know that this has been an issue that has been discussed for a while. I know that there was a meeting two weeks ago where it was brought up that there was going to be a hearing this evening. I understand that there are people on vacation, and there are people away. However, I would hope that, seeing the flurry of stuff that's been on Facebook, that some of those people would have contacted the city council with their opinions by now. So it's not that this is not known about, and I kind of believe that although it would be, you know, I don't know if more people would have come if they weren't on vacation. Not everybody's on vacation. So I'm urging you based on the notice, based on the opportunity that people have had to email you. I mean, have you gotten emails? Has the public emailed you in the past couple of weeks that you do have that, you know, those opinions to go on? So my statement is about urging you to do it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edelson. Okay, we'll get to this side of the room, and then we'll go to this side here. Mr. Bernadino, and then we'll go over to this side here. Welcome, Mr. Bernadino. It's good to see you.
Thank you. Good to be here. If I understand this correctly, there's a bigger issue here, I think, so please correct me if I'm wrong. Are we talking about a change in the charter and a change of zoning? Did I get that correct?
Definitely a change in the actual charter itself.
And there's a change in something that I'm not mistaken.
And there was a change?
No zoning change. So there's a change in our charter?
No.
In the ordinance, in the ordinance, in the code?
The code.
That you're allowing for this?
Correct.
Okay. So all of these years that we have been waiting for a hospital in Melbourne, or more than ever, this could have been put in the code that a hospital is needed on this barren island. Am I getting that right?[1256.12][1256.12](APPLAUSE). So we're talking about, because we're talking about this issue, which I have really no position on. I mean, again, like Harvey said, you make the right decision. You make the decision according to the welfare of this community, the safety of this community. And let me remind you, we don't have a hospital here, okay? And I'd like you to take that into account. And if, in fact, you can be creative enough to create an ordinance that would help get one here, there you go. Thank you very much.[1266.12][1266.12](APPLAUSE).
And again, we welcome all your comments, folks, and we do need to hear from everyone here. We just need you to state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Veronica Volker. I'm a West End resident for 50 years. And my question is to a lot of the situation about the owners of the restaurants on Park Avenue and such objecting to this concession stand. Do they really think that somebody from Manhattan is going to come down, go in the ocean, take a swim, come up to Park Avenue, eat lunch, have a beer, and go back to the beach to finish their day? I mean, this is in, you know, we get a lot of out-of-towns. You look at Edward's Boulevard, it's almost like a cattle park in the summer. So I think that, you know, it's not just the locals, because the locals know how we live in Long Beach, and they know how to get into Long Beach. So we're talking about out-of-town people, and as a matter of fact, on your commercials, I don't think you show the boardwalk and the ocean, also believe you show restaurants and bars, asking people, inviting people to come down to and be with us in March. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.[1288.12][1288.12](APPLAUSE). And again, we welcome everyone. We just need your name for the record. Welcome to our city council meeting.
Thank you. My name is Linda King. I'm at 313 West Walnut Street. I'm here to speak in opposition to liquor on the boardwalk and liquor on the beach. I haven't been coming to a lot of city council meetings lately, but when I did come, when I hear this whole discussion, one word comes to my mind. I remember Chancies.[1299.12][1299.12](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Ms. King. Thank you. We have more hands on this side of the show than the... Is the reward greater than the risk involved? And is the issue about money? Or is the issue about people? And when you take that into consideration, you make a decision that you think what's best for you and our city. It's still the city of all people here. The diversity, as you know, is great. The needs are great. The pleasures are different. But the answer really is, what's best for the people in the city. And I ask you, to take the responsibility, do your job and vote. Good luck.
We appreciate everyone coming out, particularly representatives such as Mr. Weizenberg. Back there, I see a hand. And then we'll go to the front here. Okay. You'll have to excuse me, I can't see too well back there, but I believe this is... Mr. Elmore, yes. Welcome.
Ray Elmore, five sixty West Broadway. I wasn't planning on really speaking on this issue, but I had the pleasure after the polar bears, as I've volunteered as a lifeguard, to go to Lola's. And the owner of Lola's kinda sat down and spoke about this issue. And his concern was, you know, he had his business. It's a great business, I mean, he does tremendous charity work, opening up his doors to the wounded warriors, the polar bears, so many great charities, he just gives great deals to. He's a great owner, he's a long-time owner of this town. And the idea is, I fully understand, to be a successful business, if you have a restaurant, you gotta sell out of one. I also believe that our public can handle it, and our boardwalk is safe. But I will say that I'm not so sure, by allowing it so these other owners can make more money, I do believe it's gonna be at the expense of a place like Lola's. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elmore. They'll sit here in the front, and then we'll just go back to this side here. We'll get everyone, everyone will have a chance to be able to say something. Welcome, Ms. Ailston, good to see you.
Hi, good evening. I really wasn't gonna speak, but one of the things that I didn't wanna say was, I'm urging the council to vote tonight. And the reason I'm urging the council to vote tonight is because I know that this has been an issue, that has been discussed for a while. I know that there was a meeting two weeks ago where it was brought up that there was going to be a hearing this evening. I understand that there are people on vacation and there are people away. However, I would hope that, seeing the flurry of stuff that's been on Facebook, that some of those people would have contacted the city council with their opinions by now. So it's not that this is not known about. And I kinda believe that although it would be, you know, I don't know if more people would've come if they weren't on vacation. Not everybody's on vacation. So urging you based on the notice, based on the opportunity that people have had to email you, I mean, have you gotten emails? Has the public emailed you in the past couple of weeks? So you do have that, you know, those opinions to go on. So my statement is about urging you to do it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ailston. Ms. Bernardino, then the young lady behind Mr. Bradish. And then we'll go over to this side here. Ms. Bernardino, it's good to see you.
Thank you.
Yes. We just need you to state your name for the record.
Barbara Bernardino. And I haven't been here as long as Harvey, but almost. If I understand this correctly, there's a bigger issue here, I think. So please correct me if I'm wrong. Are we talking about a change in the charter? And a change of zoning, did I get that correct?
There's definitely a change in the actual charter itself.
And there's a change of zoning, if I'm not mistaken.
No, there was no change.
No zoning change. So there's a change in our charter?
No.
In the ordinance, in the ordinance? In the code?
The code.
That you're allowing for this?
Correct.
Okay. So, all of these years that we have been waiting for a hospital in Malibu, or more than ever, this could've been put in the code that a hospital is needed on this barren ground. Am I getting that right? So we're talking about, we're talking about this issue, which I have really no position on. I mean, again, like Harvey said, you make the right decision. You make the decision according to the welfare of this community, the safety of this community. And let me remind you, we don't have a hospital here. Okay? And I'd like you to take that into account. And if, in fact, you can be creative enough to create an ordinance that would help get one here, there you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming on. And again, we welcome all your comments, folks. And we do need to hear from everyone here. We just need you to state your name to the record.
Good evening, my name is Veronica Volker, and I'm a West End resident for fifty years. And my question is to a lot of the situation about the owners of the restaurants on Park Avenue and such objecting to this concession stand. Do they really think that somebody from Manhattan is gonna come down, go in the ocean, take a swim, come up to Park Avenue, eat lunch, have a beer, and go back to the beach to finish their day? I mean, this is in, you know, we get a lot of out-of-towners. You look at Edward's Boulevard, it's almost like a cattle park in summer. So I think that, you know, it's not just the locals, because the locals know how we live on the beach, and they know how to get it. So we're talking about out-of-town here. And as a matter of fact, on your commercials, I don't think you show the boardwalk and the ocean, also believe you show restaurants and bars, asking people, inviting people to come down to and be with us in March. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, we welcome everyone. We just need your name to the record. Welcome to our city council meeting.
Thank you. My name is Linda King, I'm at three thirteen West Walnut Street. I'm here to speak in opposition to liquor on the boardwalk and liquor on the beach. I haven't been coming to a lot of city council meetings lately. But when I did come, when I hear this whole discussion, one word comes to my mind. I remember Chancies.
Okay, we have more hands on this side of the room than the young lady? Yes, come on up, come on up. I know there are a lot of young ladies here, I know, I don't know her very much. Welcome.
Welcome. Hi, I'm Michelle Kelly, I live at seventy-sixth Harmony Street. Good evening, I would like to address the city council and as a local business owner and as a resident and parent. We have watched many businesses struggle and leave after our pain and damage. As a community, we have to find ways for our businesses to not only be sustainable, to succeed. It is important for our city council and our community to find ways to help businesses survive. A taco is great, but a taco will appear with goose salad and will satisfy a desire of residents and tourists. The owners of these concessions have gone out of their way to address concerns of the community and certain special interest groups. So it's not to create an out-of-control scenario. They have created much stricter guidelines than they would even require for them to sell alcohol in their business. No one is recommending a bar on the boardwalk or beach. We have a beautiful boardwalk which has the potential to become a bigger destination, offering variety in food and drink options. This also brings a lot of walk-in traffic to all of our Long Beach businesses, giving a monetary boost to stores and restaurants on Park Avenue and Beach Street. As a resident and a parent, I would love to be able to enjoy an adult beverage at one of these new concessions. I have visited many other boardwalk communities, and I've had a meal to drink, relaxing, and taking in the view. How great it would be to do that in my own beach community. As for the outcry of, this will encourage underage drinking. Of certain special interest groups, I have to disagree. One, enhance self-imposed rules by the owners. Two, desire by the owners for the boardwalk to remain family-friendly. And three, it's a fishbowl atmosphere in concession stands makes underage drinking too easy to be seen and reported. Long Beach has a policy of no, which has encouraged the listed drinking on the boardwalk and beaches. Having nice things to do on the boardwalk in the evening like eating a meal and having a drink while listening to soft music and the sound of the ocean encourages a family type act during the evening hours, which will reduce trouble on the boardwalk just by adults being there. Thank you.
The young lady with the red blouse? Welcome, and we just need your name to the record.
Yes, my name is Ellen Miller, and I live at two fifty Shore Road. So my backyard or front yard is the boardwalk. I sleep most nights, even in the wintertime, with my door open, because I like to hear the sound of the ocean. But I also hear all the activities on the boardwalk, even after the boardwalk is supposed to be closed. So when people, a lot of people don't realize that even though the boardwalk is closed in the summer at eleven o'clock, there are still lots of people on the boardwalk. And it has something to do with age. I appreciate the business owners wanting to do a twenty-three-year-old drinking age, but I would say that most of the people that I know that are destructive are in their forties and fifties. You don't have to be twenty-three to have a responsible drinker. So I'm not concerned about the underage drinking, I'm concerned about family aspect. I've only lived in Long Beach for two and a half years, so I know I'm kind of a puppy compared to everyone else. But it is my home. And I'm a biker, I'm a runner, I'm a walker. And I do know that even though I support all the businesses that are there, and I know some of them have gotten to go to a movie or something because of my support of their business, when I'm running or walking or riding my bike, especially near the businesses that have high congestion, I can't get through, it's not safe. There are people who walk in those bike lanes, running. I usually have to weed through people. And if we're trying to make it a family-oriented place, and that's why I moved here, I don't see that serving alcohol is going to make it better. I don't think I can say it as well as that lovely fifteen-year-old girl named Natalie. I guess, I'm a former schoolteacher and I would've loved to have all my students just like her. So I do wanna say that the businesses that opened on the boardwalk, they knew when they opened the businesses that there was no alcohol being served. And so to complain that they can't serve alcohol now, I don't know if it's a great argument. I do know that the coffee shop is open all summer long, all winter long, and they don't serve alcohol, and they're still open and they're doing okay. I don't think that alcohol is going to enhance things. I can't say statistically if it's gonna hurt things, but I know that I wanna continue to enjoy the boardwalk. And the last thing I want is, when my windows are open, to hear the lingering of probably adults who've had a little bit too much to drink and trying to, you know, make their way home in the wrong direction. So I'm opposed to it, but as people have said before me, I'm sure that you will make the best decision for the people of this community either way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. I think the camera behind you has had its hand up before you. Just come right up to her, and then we'll go across this way and then back over to the right.
My name is Rob Walton, six twenty-six East Chester Street, Long Beach, New York, resident since seven thirty-six. Growing up here, seeing Long Beach as a primary transition, it has over the years. I've never really seen any serious problem drinking on a boardwalk. Back in the seventies and eighties, we were hugely confined to the areas that served. And with today, in the way Long Beach is, it's a growing city, very rapidly, the density of this city is thirty-fourth in the United States. And that would contribute to the higher percentage rate in drinking underage. Myself knowing several of the business owners, knowing them all my life, knowing their great family values. They've been established in the city for, they've swiped for a long time. They've contributed to the city. They only want the best for the city. And I think if this is done correctly, it will benefit the city and its residents. We are very kind of a city, and I think that we should take this on. I think it's a good thing for the city.
Mr. Walton, thank you so much. Thank you for coming. The young lady with the glasses, hit you. Okay, thank you for being here. And we just need your name for the record.
Kristin McKenna. I'm sorry, I'm a laryngologist. I just wanted to address a couple of things I've been hearing. A few people have been asking for a public survey on this topic, and it sounds like from what Mr. Sherman said, that there was one. Everyone was asked what they wanted, and what they wanted were restaurants. And as someone who's worked her whole life in restaurants, I would say nearly impossible for a restaurant to survive, especially in our economy and the way things are, without a liquor license, without the ability to serve alcohol. It's very difficult to make money with the overheads that come with, you know, training your staff and kitchen equipment and all the things that go into owning a restaurant. I am in a unique position as a mother of three young children that will spend their lives growing up in this little slice of paradise that we have. I'm also, I'm a stay-home mom now, but before I had my third, I worked in Oasis-funded substance abuse facilities with adolescents and adults. And I can tell you that a very, very minimal percentage of adolescent drinking begins in bars. It does begin in the home. I think that point is kinda moot at this point. I think the underage drinking concern is also kinda moot. And I can tell you, another unique position I'm in is I'm a former employee of Sean Sullivan's. And when he hired me, the rule of thumb was, Sean, he didn't stand up, so I goes and see him. The rule of thumb, and I'll never forget this, was, "Kristen, if they look younger than me, you card them." And he's had that white hair for, probably, twenty-eight years or whatever, nineteen, yeah. So I don't think that underage drinking, I can speak for Sean Sullivan, I know him well. And with the concern that the young lady right before me had brought up about overserving patrons. When a bartender or an employee TIPS-certified, that means they are trained to serve responsibly. That means they are trained to identify that a person has either reached their limit or reached a limit at which the establishment is comfortable with. And so I think that's another way that the owners have gone, really above and beyond, by demanding that their employees are TIPS-certified so that they can see, "All right, I'm not gonna serve this person anymore." They've had two drinks, and maybe two drinks is okay for you, but it doesn't look like it's okay for you. And then someone else made the comment about the coffee shop, and that is doing okay. And that's great. But nobody wants to just do okay. You don't wanna just get by. It's really hard. Restaurant businesses are so hard. You guys see the turnover in our town all the time. I hate driving by and seeing, I miss our variety store. I hate driving by and seeing those empty storefronts, you know? And I hate to see these concession stands being empty as well. So I'm...
Thank you, Ms. McKenna. I'm glad you have hair, you know, I'm glad that you have very, very healthy hair. Mr. Appel? Good to see you there. How are you, Appel?
How are you, Appel? I've been the host of Local Long Beach Show since 2010. And I have a lot of respect for Julie Vining, she's done a fabulous job at Long Beach aware. And Eileen Gaud's daughter was off the charts. So elegant, wore a beautiful speech, and it was really great to see Harvey. But tonight, I'm gonna speak up for the restaurants and the bar owners, because after Hurricane Sandy, they were the fiber of this community. I remember Sean Sullivan donating thousands and thousands of free foods to so many events. And I have performed at so many fundraisers and been to so many fundraisers. In the six years I've been listening to the show, not one bar or one restaurant has ever said no to me for a gift certificate. They are the heart and soul of our community. This Sunday is so typical of the spirit and what these bars and restaurants mean to Long Beach. Two women called me about a week ago. There's a young lady in Long Beach, she had stage four cancer, and she was giving up. But they organized a fundraiser this Sunday at Speakeasy, and that totally lifted her spirit and has given her the will to live again. And it's places like Speakeasy in Cabana, Minnesota's, that are always there for the community. And they've suffered greatly after Hurricane Sandy. And what I heard tonight, I wanna raise a point that no one had said tonight. I honestly feel, if this is passed, it's gonna make the boardwalk safer. You know why? Because I've heard people say, now they, they were walking the boardwalk and there's not really many police there. I heard saying that first of all, the ages twenty-three or over, and they're gonna have security by these stands. Meaning, I think the boardwalk, if this is passed, is gonna be safer because of the security presence. So I say, vote yes for this, support the restaurants, let them drive, they're doing the right work with the heart and soul and the fiber of this community. Thank you.
Ms. Goodman, yes, please come forward, I recognize you. Good to see you here. Ah, yes, and it's my glasses, not that I, of course, I have tremendous respect for you, Ms. Goodman. Please state your name to the record.
I'm a woman, former city councilwoman, fifty-five B West Broadway. You know, I'm friends on Facebook with quite a few of the concession owners, and some even in person. But with that being said, I want them to understand that I'm speaking, you know, the expression, "It's business, it's not personal." This is about the vibe and the well-being of the city of Long Beach. You guys have moved the city towards having a family-oriented beach park and also boardwalk. And it's almost safe to walk around on the boardwalk all the time. But before any of you, like, were even living in Long Beach, so I wanna say it's maybe in the year 2000, or before you became active in Long Beach, we had an illegal bar on the boardwalk, the Turquoise Bar. And obviously, there was some punk business, because it didn't matter how many times I came up and spoke to the city council and the corporation council, that bar continued with nightly entertainment. And in case you don't know, I lived directly across the street from its former location, which is, would have been or was, next to the Albury Hotel. There was constant fights, police had to be called all the time. Now, I'm not saying that that would be the situation with these concessions. The point I'm trying to make is, alcohol and saltwater don't mix. And while I don't have any children to say, for example, like, deciding I'm concerned with underage drinking, I'll tell you what I am concerned about. When I sat on the council, and we all know it's not natives of Long Beach generally who drown, it's the out-of-towners. So when I saw, so of course I was on the beach when they were looking to try to rescue who was lost in water. It was my children, the lifeguards, who had to go in grid formation into the water to find the bodies. And you know what? That ripped my heart out every time I had to watch it, and I don't know how those kids did it without being traumatized for life. And that's, that's the kind of thing that I'm afraid of. That's what I think you're inviting here. I'll be wrapping it up as quickly as I can. Howie Pell just talked about how after Sandy, the restaurants in the city of Long Beach were the fabric, who held everybody up, lifted everybody up, did everything, fed people. In some ways, this is a terrible payback to them, because these restaurant owners, and one of them is my neighbor, Mr. McCarthy owns Mollens. He's there for every charity event, very supportive of the community. But you know what? For the benefit of five concession leases, you are kicking the rest of the restaurant owners in the teeth. You're being disrespectful to them, because in the end, who is benefiting from allowing the alcohol to these five concessions? It's the five concessions that's benefiting. It's not the city of Long Beach, it's not the residents of Long Beach who have survived Sandy and now kind of want the peace and relaxation of the community and the boardwalk. Please don't deny us that. Please vote no.
Ms. Goodman, thank you so much. And again, I appreciate that you're being with us today. And please come visit us again, okay? Because that's important for us to hear you.
It's hard to wake up at three o'clock in the morning after you come to this party that...
Thank you, thank you for being here. We're gonna go to this side of the room. We're gonna start with Mr. Adamo and the gentleman, and of course, I'm truly... We'll get to everyone there, yes. Welcome, Mr. Adamo.
My legs are stiff.
I know, it's a long sit right now.
Anyway, hello, Karen Adamo, seventy-four Forest River Street. I would only ask that if you do vote tonight and you choose yes, perhaps the compromise would be to try it out for a year and see if the conditions are met, see if it turns out to be a good thing. And if not, see if your conditions are being enforced. And I know that is a bit of a hardship for the concession owners, because you have to go through the process of getting a liquor license, and I imagine expenses involved. I don't know anything about the restaurant business, except that I love to go out to eat. But maybe a trial period would be a good compromise.
Thank you, Mr. Adamo, that's good to see you. And then, Mr. Dubow. Please, Amy, come on up, it's good to see you. Every time I see the Dubows, I think of a house being lifted up in the air. We're just finishing lifting our house up, and good to see you, Mr. Dubow.
Thanks.
You're very perfect.
Amy, do that. I'm not for or against of it, but I do have some concerns. Somebody early on had said that there have been no drownings during... early on had said that there have been no drownings during beach park hours, but this is going to be going on until 10:00 at night, so that's Long Beach Park Hours. So I would have concern about that because that statistic is meaningless. Um, I think with drinking and people maybe not taking the drinks off the premises, that they can be drinking on the premises and then walking off the premises and still things. The concessions, the way they are now, from what I can see, are already moving, people are hanging out outside into the bike lane, like somebody else has spoken. Um, and I think with more people and more drinking, that situation would be exacerbated unless they could put maybe fences at some, you know, I don't know, some distance out that can still leave plenty of room for walking, but not have people wandering into the bike lanes while they've been in the establishments. Uh, the restaurants have said that they're volunteering to be policing their own areas, but what if they don't? Uh, somebody even said something about it's only table service. But I think that there are some of them that are not table service. That there, there's like a bar outside with a couple of bench, uh, stools. Do they also get the, um, the opportunity to have the liquor licenses there? Because then, then on the boardwalk, it's not table service. There's people standing around and milling around. So those are my concerns. I understand the benefits to the business owners. I understand the benefits of being able to sit up there and have a beer with your customers. But, um, those are my concerns that I'm not sure how you can address them.
Thank you, Ms. Huber. We appreciate that. And very well-taken points that you're making. Um, we're, uh, I believe that part of the question that you're asking regarding the facilities themselves was addressed earlier. And, uh, and of course, uh, there has to be where, say, you can't drink beyond the service point. If they don't have a place, uh, where that could happen, they don't get a permit. Uh, basically, that's, that's the answer to that question. But we're going to go on to our next person. Thank you, Ms. Huber. Thank you for coming up. Yes, come on, sir. And then we'll go to the young lady.
Welcome. Thank you. Um, I've been living here for 10 years, 369 West Broadway.
What's your name, sir?
Samuel Wilgar. I specifically do not live in the West End or on Park Avenue to stay away from the drinking. Um, I have a six-month-old that I plan to raise a family here. Um, I am very pro-business and, um, you know, I understand all that. However, I'd like you guys to put the residence first for once instead of the money at hand here. And, um, to stay on, really, my main focus is the vibe. Like, if I walk down, uh, on the West End with my son, let's say he's one or two years old, there's going to be a very different vibe than walking down the boardwalk. And I'm afraid that's going to happen when we walk down the boardwalk now. Because I mean, to say, one or two drinks isn't going to make a difference. If we had a town hall meeting tonight where they were handing out cocktails, I think it'd be a little rowdy here after even one or two drinks. So I'd hate to see that happen to the boardwalk. And, uh, that's really why I, I live here. You know, I live here for the beach and the boardwalk. And, um, you know, I'd hate to really see it go to, um, you know, turn into like a, you know, just a hangout spot for drinking. And I'm not worried about the young kids drinking. It's the older people, I think, they're usually the problem, or a problem.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Huber. Good to hear. Good to hear. Uh, I'd like to give a hand to this young lady, please. Come on up. And then we'll go to the folks in the back. Okay. Welcome to our city council meeting. And thank you for staying with us this long. This is important to hear from everyone. We just need your name to the record.
Janice Stein. I grew up in Long Beach. I also want to thank everyone I know who's getting a lead. One of the concerns is not necessarily that the underage kids are going to be jerking out these concessions, but it's really the messages that are sending to the families and to the youth. Whether they're realized or not, a lot of these messages are subconscious or special. And this stuff is really important. So one of the things I want me to think about, the boardwalk is one of the only places in Long Beach that you should be doing with no alcohol or on your face. This is the message we're sending to youth. The kids are listening to these messages more than we think. The idea sounds nice on paper, but in reality, it's a hard task to control. The concessions are not closed. And the message that we're sending to youth is that everyone needs to drink with their dinner, okay? The boardwalk gets very crowded. I know that was mentioned many times. But the thing that we have to realize is the line for people to drink and cannot drink, where's that line? It's really hard to enforce. And again, we're sending mixed messages to the kids. The youth are going to say, oh, right in this area, adults could drink, but in this area we can't. So it's sending a lot of mixed messaging to the kids. And it's really youth and the subconscious messages that I want you to write to me because that's part of it. Um, and then again, alcohol, alcohol is toxic. CDC has researched it and it's very clear. The more numbers, it's directly related to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stein. It's important to hear. Uh, next, the young man. Yes, comment. Come on. Welcome. And thank you for staying with us this late.
How are you, gentlemen? My name is Joseph Abrams. My family came here in 67. Uh, I've seen Long Beach change through the years. I know there's not enough, enough dates for kids to do anymore. I mean, we used to have a bona. We had amusement parks. We had everything to do for the kids. But my concern here is, it's not about the kids. It's about this establishment. Is it going to be run correctly? I worked a boardwalk for 11 years in a tea farm. And let me tell you something. He's very focused on keeping his neighbors safe and everyone safe. I know because I used to be that guy on the braster corner till 4:30 in the morning, making sure nobody was disturbed by the air. So I understand a lot of changes have made. But, you know, it's the responsibility of a person. We're talking about a lot of people on vacation right now. Well, what do they do? Oh, they're sitting on the beach, I'm going to drink. I think that's what vacation is. People come here from the city. They should be able to enjoy a beverage in a responsible area. No one's saying walk around the boardwalk with alcohol. They're saying have a responsible drink, something to eat in a specific area. Isn't that what they're applying for? They're not saying anything about walking on the beach. There is a specific area. So how is that going to interfere with families walking on the beach? When they should look, and I know you all know what I'm talking about with the establishment. But I know Brian Person, he's going to respect his business. He's going to put the right personnel in the right positions to make sure it stays safe. Thank you for hearing my name. Thank you, Ms. Stein.
And there's two hands I see in the back and then the gentleman by the window. Okay, we'll start with the person on the outside there. Mr. Bendo, yes. Welcome again, Mr. Bendo. It's good to, good to have you stay with us this late. Yeah, I know. Everybody has to get up.
Hello again, John Bendo. Um, there's been some interesting arguments on both sides here on this issue tonight. And I guess the one thing that's been a little interesting is, some of this is being taken from the perspective of, we're talking about adding the sale of alcohol to the boardwalk. We already have it going on. We have the Alegria. If you go by the Alegria on any given weekend, it is packed. This past weekend, on Saturday, it was packed. There are people in there doing what they would be doing at these concessions, enjoying the meal and enjoying some adult beverages. We have the Oboe on New York Avenue, which is 20 feet from the end of the boardwalk. It's already going on. So when this whole process started to these concessions, we were trying to do something better than we had before. We didn't want to sell hot dogs and french fries. The idea was to have a nice eating establishment, serious eating establishments on the boardwalk. These concessionaires have delivered, in some cases, investing huge sums of money to do this. And there was an intent when the RFP went out that at some point, they would probably be able to sell alcohol. So there should be some integrity to that process. Um, but that being said, now that they've created these eating establishments, we're now talking about holding them to a different set of standards than the other eating establishments in the city. It's, it, it, you know, it needs to be an apples to apples. If a restaurant up on, whether it's Park Avenue or wherever it is, is able to serve, then why can't an eating establishment that's not just selling hot dogs and, and french fries be able to do the same? They're a restaurant as well. They may be a little smaller. They may have some outdoor seating. But if you walk through town in any summer day, there are tables outside on Park Avenue and all on Beach Street with people eating and having adult beverages. We're now trying to hold these concessions to a different set of standards than we allow for the other businesses. That's something that you really should be, um, thinking about. And with that, I'll just, uh, one final, uh, quick, uh, comment. The, the argument about taking business away from the restaurants, this was the same argument that was used with the food trucks, that we were going to put the restaurants out of business. The food trucks have been enormously successful and have added immensely to the quality of being on the boardwalk. Um, so with that, and I'll just add one of the comments, you had made a, a comment at the very beginning of the night about, does this put the city in the, uh, business of selling alcohol? And of course, the lawyer explained. But I would just point out that the city owns the Stockton Shop, Shopping Center, which has a liquor store in it. So in a sense, the city is already in this business and this space. So this is not going to be any different than what the city's already doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bendo. The gentleman at the, at the end there, and, uh, welcome, We want to make sure we hear from everyone who wants to comment on this very important theme tonight. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Councilor Michael O'Geehan. I will make it brief. We had conducted a survey internally. The results are inconclusive. Basically, half like it, half don't, some don't care. Um, the question that comes up quite often was this. Most people feel there will be accidents, witch doors, cyclists, and service dogs, and skateboards, even though the latter is against the rules, and that leads to the problem of enforcement. High school, college kids dressed for the blue shirt, the badge, will just not cut it as code enforcement in areas like this. I am only the messenger. These are not my ideas. Um, I'm with the Long Beach, the Long Beach Walks area. My neighbor next door, who I just met tonight, asked, will food trucks be allowed to serve alcohol? I promised her I would ask that question. Um, but what I had just given you is if you could discuss or prepare or plan for the applicant's responsibility for the security enforcement areas, and what is the city's responsibility, if adopted, plans to safeguard the non-concession area for pedestrians, patrons, cyclists, and commuter beach traffic. That's probably the most important part of one of the equations. The second part of what I had given you is section 10, dot one, under the article 10, under insurance. I think the corporation council had answered some of those questions. It may be redundant. But there's a clause there that says, in respect to the premises on an occurrence basis with a combined single limit annually. Just a clarification on that. I understand it is $3 million. And then there's a clause, which I underlined. Um, if that can be just clarified, I would appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. Thank you. Certainly, it's interesting for Mr. Calvinski. Maybe you can help to bring clarity to that. The, uh, I don't know if you remember all of the questions you were asked, um, this gentleman from the, uh, the Walks. I have to, I have to say that, uh, my experience in the Walks has been very positive in getting the names of my neighbors there. Yes, and of course, Mr. Lynch as well. Uh, Mr. Calvinski.
Okay. We had the question here about food trucks and services and alcohol. Um, if you need a lease with the city in order to be covered by this ordinance, the food trucks have a license agreement, which is not a lease. This is a different thing. So they wouldn't be covered under this law. Um, as far as the question of insurance, it is saying, I, I'm not sure if the question is on an occurrence basis. Is that what the question was? On an occurrence basis is a term of art. That means for any single incident in the insurance world, you're covered up to the amount of $3 million under, under this clause here. Occurrence, like I said, is, is something that's defined in the policy that they have. But generally, it's a series of actions or events that occur on that single occurrence. Like, uh, if an accident happens, that time, that's an occurrence. Um, as far as any other questions, sir? I think that those were the questions that I was talking about.
Michael, did we answer your questions?
I thought I could tell that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Calvinski. Thank you so much for being with us here. We have one, two people here. Uh, we'll start with the young lady in the front here and then the young man in the rear. Welcome, man. And thank you for staying with us, Ms. Bendo.
Thank you for hearing me. My, uh, my name is Amy Graham, and my children are in the age now where they're wandering around the city on their own, often spend time on the boardwalk. My children's lives are worth way more than $3 million. If anything would happen to them, it is just absolutely unacceptable. Not just my children, but all the children on Long Beach. And to, to have more alcohol, it's to me unacceptable and completely irresponsible on your part if you were to vote to prove this. There are already, as mentioned, places on the boardwalk where people can go responsibly drink if they should so choose. Uh, and it was also mentioned that the food trucks are immensely successful. Why can't the concession stands be too? They are not restaurants. They're concession stands.
Ms. Graham, thank you so much. An important comment to me. And, uh, the young man here, welcome. And again, we, we appreciate everyone staying with us because it's a critical, critical decision that has to be made, you know?
Good evening. John McAlley, 613 West Walnut Street, 167-year resident of Long Beach. And I waited long enough that most people actually took my comments. But just a quick review. I have time. Howie stole my comment. Sean Sullivan's really been nothing but a patron saint of Long Beach. And to assume that he would do anything that would harm the community, uh, and gave it a monstrous notion and gives it our trust to give this a fair go. Uh, John Bendo stole the comment. I was part of the community reconstruction program. Uh, and what we were trying to do with the boardwalk was do something different, special, high-quality. The margins in the food industry are razor thin. And unless we want to be doing dirty water dogs or fried food, these businesses are going to need to be able to serve alcohol. A lot of people tonight mentioned, uh, we are trying to foster a family-friendly environment in the city. I wholeheartedly agree. Um, but mom and dad, mom and mom, dad and dad are also part of the family, and sometimes we get thirsty. Um, I believe that I am a father of two young kids, uh, and I have every intention of being fully responsible for them, a fully responsible role model for them. Uh, I would like to teach them that having a beer is an okay thing to do at a legal age in a responsible way. So I would ask you to vote tonight. Um, and I think the proper rule for government is, uh, to give responsible people the opportunity to act responsibly and not bar them from that chance. So, uh, I think that's the appropriate place to be. I ask you to vote yes, and I ask you to vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bendo. Very special person that's in the audience. We hope there's still, still the audience. Ms. Leah Tozer, if you're still here. Very good, very good. Welcome. Yes, you're very special. Everyone here is very special.
I, I want to say everything that that guy just said. That was awesome. Um, it's on Leah Tozer. I've only been here for 22 years, so he's got that on me. Um, and, um, I want to speak just on behalf of being a mother. I have a six-year-old and a three-year-old. I'm also a CAT PTA president. I'm very active in the community and in the kids' schools. And... And, you know, something that kind of upset me was when people were going around trying to get some information about families who would be for or against this. Took a vote on a Friday morning at 9:30 with not much notice, and then wouldn't allow any of us to give a proxy vote. So I wanted to say on behalf of many of the families, and I can speak for myself, my kids are my everything. And my husband is from England, so having a beer when we go out is pretty normal, and the kids are aware of it, and it's on us to be responsible for our children. And the people that are trying to go for their SLA license are some of the most responsible people that I know. So I just wanted to let you know, guys are doing awesome. Vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Graham. We have Ms. Lilly. Come forward, ma'am. It's good to see you tonight. And we're trying to move this along so that we can finalize, you know, we've been here more than two hours on this topic, and it's an important topic. You know, changing the city code is a critical, critical part of what we're getting started.
I'm Kathy Wayne, I'm a resident of Cape Overport, Long Beach. I've been a resident of Long Beach for over 56 years. Long Beach is a very unique community and family-oriented, and is envied by most of Nassau County. People have enjoyed the beach down through the years without the sale of alcohol. Extra, I should say. It's your responsibility, as I said, to make judgments from wisdom, not from monetary values. You're dealing with people, and I can tell you that you better be careful on the decisions you make. You already made decisions for some living in our situations to take place here. Now we're putting alcohol on top of that. Let's just be careful about the decisions we make, because people come first, and monetary values do not supersede the values and welfare of families.
Thank you, Mrs. Graham. Okay, we can have a gentleman here. Are you sure? Come forward.
Welcome. Hi, my name is Nate Beer. I live on 25 Main Walk. I've been here 15 years. And I'd like to discuss the notion that family-friendly and alcohol don't go together. I was recently at Disney World. They sell alcohol at pretty much every place there, except for the original park, because Mr. Disney did not want alcohol. After the other parks, every single one had alcohol. I did not see one problem. I did not see anyone have a hand, and I think this is a good thing for the city and money for you, for tax. So I'm for this. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Thank you. Yes, sir. Come forward. Again, thank you for staying with us. This is an important hearing we're having. And please name your name for the record.
Michael Cuzello, 75, 38 West Beach. Most people know me as Mikey Tax. Shocker. I'm a local builder in town. We all want to talk about the revitalization of this community. You can probably ask a bunch of the guys in the seats right here to let you know that I've done my fair share of this community, especially after the hurricane. I not only built Knights of Columbus Hall from the ground up, I did speakeasies, swingbellies, dome hood, trainers, helped out shines. I could keep going on and on. The only thing I can say to you gentlemen is that, especially Sean Sullivan and I, we've had the conversations in preparing for this, and this conversation to me always is, "Hey, Michael, what do you think we can do to box this in for me to make this a safe environment for people to come and enjoy what we're doing here?" All these gentlemen here are ready to do what you guys have asked for, if this so happens. The only thing I can say is please vote tonight. You don't know how long the SLA takes. It is a laborious process to get it, a people work. It could take three months to six months. I don't just build in Long Beach, I built through New York City, all across Long Island, Brooklyn, you name it. These guys deserve the opportunity. They all care. They're all just trying to make this community better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Welcome to our city council meeting. I know it's a long meeting, but support may hear from everyone.
Thank you for everyone, yes, thank you. Mr. Chairman, first, I want to say thank you for meeting with me last week about this whole issue. A lot of people touched on what I would talk about anyway, and Natalie did a great job, so I'm sorry to mess that up. Mona and Bobby all had something. Judy, everyone has their voices in this whole matter, and my voice was for restaurants, okay? I had asked at a chamber of commerce meetings what due diligence they did when they made the decision that they were forced to drink on the floor. They had no answer. So, but I gave them an answer. I said I did the due diligence for it, but you didn't do it. And the due diligence clause, I asked each area restaurant, "How do you feel about this? And what has happened since Sandy?" They were all against it. The economic impact since Sandy has affected everyone on Park Avenue, okay? And that's what everyone has to understand. Because I know people say, "Well, it's a big deal, it's a little competition." It's more than just getting a beer on the floor. On a personal note, I have to note Greg LaPenta and the Sullivans, and they're great people, okay? They run great operations. There's nothing against it at all, you know? And I don't know Bradish's, but I'm sure they're nice, too. But I know those two, and I know their class operation, or whatever they do, they're going to do a problem. But that's not the point here. What you have to do is think about the best sort of community, the people of Long Beach and the business community. That's what you have to do. It's not a friends and family, it's not a popularity contest. We can pack this room, it's old side, and no one's going to just talk about each other, but you're not going to accomplish anything. So what I say to you is, forget about voting tonight, okay? Put a referendum on this ballot in November, and let the city come out and let them vote, let their voice be heard, good or bad, whatever happens, happens. The least of giving the city of Long Beach an opportunity to be heard, and that's what has to be done. Thank you for taking the time, thank you for taking the time.
Thank you, Michael. I have to apologize. I'm looking at you immediately. It's good to see you. And I'm wondering, do we have any more comments from the public? Yes, sir. And you have to, I have to apologize, you did a bad job, so you have a good chance. And we're glad you stayed with us. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Dan Crean. I'm a fairly new resident of Long Beach, 131 West Broadway. I've been coming here for a long time. I'd like to thank you, you guys, for this hearing, because I still envy you for a very difficult decision to make on a very contentious subject. And despite the very sound and excellent conversation of the young lady in the back, I want to say that I'm for this. I think that it's a very good idea, I think, for the following three reasons, really. If you're going to have these areas business at the boardwalk, we should do what we can to help them be successful at all costs. Otherwise, there's no reason to have them there. It also sounds like the business owners have made concessions, and it also sounds like the ordinance itself has a lot of precautions set up in it to help prevent real difficult things or difficult decisions down the road that you may have to make it just doesn't work out in favor. The final, and I think most important reason to before this is that alcohol is accessible everywhere here, and there's plenty of places where people could drink. If we're worried about going on the beach, people pre-able all the time, people come to drinks, see different types of bottles, drinking's happening everywhere. The children are getting alcohol, they're not drinking in these types of establishments. You're never going to see children at them. If they're drinking, they're drinking somewhere else, and they're coming down to the beach. So I think the accessibility of it should not really be an issue, because there's plenty of bars already in Long Beach. It's about convenience, and we really need to help businesses here succeed, and we want to see more business come to Long Beach. That's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Graham. Thank you so much. The second, do I not see any more hands for comments? Again, that's comment on the change of the city code permitting alcohol, limited, of course, as was stated over and over again by our Corporation Council, the limited use of alcohol, the certainly limited areas of alcohol. With that, folks, I think that what we'll do is that we'll move on to our next item and proceed.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we call that item now, so that those that want to leave, it's getting late, can read.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second? Okay, done. Thank you.
This is a motion called at all times.
For, but if you could read it again, sir.
I want, ordinance or medical, ordinance is a save, Long Beach, the Goyat Beach Park.
I'm going to make a motion called, right? Yes, I'm voting. I'd like to make a motion to not only call the item, but also to vote on the item.
This is her vote, or to bring the item up for vote?
Both, in the same?
We have to be very clear here, because this is a motion to both bring it to vote and also to vote on.
Let's do it two simple motions. I'd like to make a motion, bring it to vote.
Okay.
I have to bring it to vote.
That's what we're bringing up?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I'd like to make another motion.
I have four.
Two and another three and a half.
I have four, the ordinance of the city of Long Beach regarding Ocean Beach Park.
You just moved the option aside.
I do.
First of all, I just want to thank everyone from the community, the local business owners, the vendors, for reaching out over the last few days and weeks to discuss the concern that allows a different organization. The decision to allow for the sale is one that I do not take lightly, and it's much of a vision. It is a defining moment for the city and the vision that we share for the future, that we should be sharp and informed. This is not a reflection on the current vendor or criteria vision that we share in the community. After listening to the concerns raised by so many in the community, the challenges of enforcing any potential restriction, the additional burden that would be placed on police and the city at large with regard to enforcement, it is an amendment I cannot support. Boardwalk, which is used widely by the community, must be protected, and for that reason, I vote no.
First, I also want to thank everybody for coming out here tonight, it's been a long night, and we really do appreciate you sharing your thoughts and concerns, which help us
in turn decide on the issue. One thing I wanted to point out that was brought up, although the original RFP may have included alcohol, that was rescinded, and the actual RFP that the vendors bid on did not have alcohol. And that's how it stood, and that's how it was fitted, and that's how the contracts and leases were awarded. One thing I also want to focus on, this isn't a question of the integrity or the character of these vendors. If anything, these vendors have been an asset to our city. We want to encourage business, we want to grow our businesses, we want to do responsibly, but this is not a question of their ability to carry out what they say they would be able to do. And I don't think anybody means to cast any dispersions on them. I think that would be premature and unfair. The problem that I have with this resolution is the resolution itself at this point. There are inconsistencies, as I see them. First off, we have a vendor coming up here contradicting our own Corporation Council as to whether or not a liquor license can or cannot be transferred. That's a concern for me. A resident also has had the concern that I had regarding the hours of service. While it was highlighted that when light boats aren't on duty, that's when drivers would occur, alcohol service would be while light boats are on duty as well. That's a concern for me. The other concerns I have, tonight, the council is voting not on allowing these vendors one by one to have the opportunity to serve alcohol, but to allow each of their leases to be reviewed by the city administration on a one-by-one basis, vary their leases. I asked our Corporation Council if this meant that each lease in theory could be different. The answer was yes. I don't think that in and of itself is a safe position for the city to be put in. It's taking away, at what we vote tonight, our ability to control how this is carried out. That's a concern for me. One resident brought up that the ordinance as drafted has protections built into it. As I agreed, it does not. It only gives the ability for the leases to have protections built into it. And the council does not vote on those leases. We do not negotiate them. I commend the vendors who are looking to voluntarily hire their own security. I think, and I agree, they did go up and above to try to meet any more concerns that were raised by the residents. However, we would still have to require our police, our other resources, to enforce their measures that they put into place. That's a concern for me. I think overall, again, I appreciate what the vendors are doing. I appreciate the creativity. I think the way the resolution is drafted has serious concerns for me. I think it might not be right now for this to go forward, and I unfortunately have to vote no.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you again for everyone staying. We thank you for your patience. Tonight's public hearing has really raised several questions that I believe are worthy of serious dialogue and further dialogue. One, I have to ask the question again, what is our vision as a city with respect to the overall boardwalk? Are we committed to creating safe spaces for our children? Why has our city council, in particular, remained silent about enforcing existing codes to protect our residents and our families? Last year, I voted along with our fellow council members to ban smoking from our beaches, and I'm still frustrated because where is the overall strategic thinking here? Again, the reality is concession owners have invested their time and their money for over a year with the expectation of moving forward and stabilizing their businesses. I'm sad to say tonight that as a city, we fail their trust. Promises made should be kept, but this was done without the full consultation of the entire council, and for that reason, I urge the city manager and corporate council to fix it. Two rules do not make a right. Tonight's resolution will not fix this present situation. We are all free to drink here. I'd love to have a relo right now, but if my freedom can potentially harm my neighbors, whether it be emotionally, financially, or physically, then I have to use my freedom in such a way, or I have to sacrifice that freedom for the greater good. Therefore, tonight, I once again will unfortunately have to vote no at this time, but I will urge us to create safe spaces for our families, lest we focus on the quality of life, and lest we store health and safety for all.
I too want to thank everyone for coming, and those that left, and everyone that sent us emails, reached out to us. As one gentleman spoke, of his survey, it is inconclusive. There's good opinions on both sides, and I don't begrudge anyone for those. I also want to thank Judy Vine for her work for underage drinking. I have a daughter in the high school, and I'm very aware of the underage drinking situation that exists everywhere. And although this item did fail, I personally believe that the boardwalk restaurants with the concessions made by these concessionaires would have been a great place to have a meal and an adult beverage in a responsible way, in a controlled way. And although I could listen to Ms. McCarthy and the concern of the other businesses, I feel that it would have been an okay thing for us to do, and it would have enhanced the entire boardwalk and potentially all the other businesses in town. I won't read everything I have written out, because unfortunately, this item did fail, but I believe yes.
Well, again, I want to thank everyone for staying with us. This has been a critical, critical item for us, because it means that we're looking at city codes and amending city codes and so on. I have to thank very, very specifically my mentor, Mr. Harvey Wiesenberg. We spent many, many years together, and I hope he's still here. I don't see him, but I hope he's still here. But I'm so glad that he showed up here tonight, because he reminded me about conviction. He reminded me about voting with my heart. And I have to say that I'm a little different than a lot of the other folks. I'm a very intense person. I've been that as a teacher, as a principal, and as a superintendent. And one of the things that I've learned, and I've only learned this very recently in my life... my life, was that both my grandfathers, my wife didn't want me to say this, but I had to say this, both my grandfathers died of cirrhosis of the liver. And I got to see an uncle in Puerto Rico literally drink himself to death. And everywhere that liquor was served, he was there. And that's not to say that everyone is as compulsive and is in danger of becoming addicted to alcohol. But I think that I am going to sigh on the side of safety here. With that vote, and respectfully, people that have passed in my family, I'm going to have to vote no on this. Thank you. Okay. I'm going to make a motion, folks, because I see that the people that were here from the Wall Street Park is waiting with us. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to make a motion to vote on the Wall Street Park in two.
You know, we got to vote out of the office.
I have two and three. Do you have a second? I have to vote to leave quietly, if you can. Very important. For Mr. Rome to come back, we need his votes. Again, we appreciate all of you being here today and chairing the whip for this important decision.
Let me stay. Want to sit?
No. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to continue with our meeting. We have to finish up the business of the city councils. We are about to go on the Wall Street Parking permit that was submitted to us. On courtesy to the folks that stayed with us this long, we will vote and make a motion. Do you vote for that right now? Do I have a second? Yes. I agree with the residents, the people who voted for the parking permits.
Next time, I'm going to make a break here, too. I'll make a homey and have a dinner, and we'll bring you.
And again, welcome to our business. You're in love with me. Thank you for applying my vote as yes.
So our last comment here of the evening is the ordinance authorizing financing for loss of separation payments to afford the benefits of employees of the city stated he has made over $2,450,000 appropriate settlement for organizing issues and not receive $2,450,000 of said city to finance that appropriation.
Mr. Sherman, maybe you can give us a little clarity on that?
Sure. From time to time, the city offers early retirement incentives in efforts to maximize our workforce. This bond issues funds for those who raise retiree, as well as employees that have been established in the retirement debt department. As a reminder, this is the fourth year in a row that we have costed this procedure. And I have to say that each year, these costs have gone down from $5.6 million in fiscal year 14, $3.5 in fiscal year 15, $2.9 in fiscal year 16, and $2.45 in fiscal year 17. And as a reminder, this item was assumed in this year's budget, and also included in the recent rating report that the investor service issued, where they again affirmed our positive rating outlook, and refer to our manageable debt burden and rapid amortization. And I guess the easy way to put it is that I remind everybody that the alternative to financing separation costs is to simply pay them outright, and that is quite a difference.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Sherman. Just in clarity, just to let the public know, that when you bond for $2.5 million for this, it's critical that you hear what Mr. Sherman just said, that Moody's credit rating still rated us very low in a positive direction, even after factoring in the bonding that we have to do, which is, by the way, part of, you know, the agreement that's contractual, so that we have to do that. It's good to see that we see a downward flow of the amount of bonding that we've had to deal with this kind of thing. So it's important to remember that, that Moody's still has given us a very, very positive rating in the city, even though we do have, you know, debt service that we have to get here to. Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Okay, are there any comments from the council?
I get that question. The early retirement that was ended, correct?
Correct. Good. Any other comments? Oh, I'll control this here. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for staying with us. It's late, Mr. Hightower. Welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to add a little bit to Jack's comments. By bonding for this, we have one of two ways to, Mr. Sherman, there's incorporated into our annual budget, which this year would have been over an additional 6% property tax increase on top of all the things we already had in last year's budget. At the same time, by bonding for the amount of system development over multiple years that we don't pay for.
Very good. Okay, that's important. Any other comments from the, about comments from the public? This is item number five, for the $2.5 million dollar bonding as a part of our contractual agreement with our employees. With that, Mr. Fraser, we can move on. Yes, and very important that everyone else, yes? Yes, please go forward, sir.
Just go stand.
Thank you for staying with us, sir.
Tim, perhaps, 517 West Penn Street. I ran businesses for a number of years, about 40 years. And somebody wants us to separate, leave, let them leave. They say early buyouts and all this stuff, it doesn't work. All right? There's many things you can do right here in the city of Homage. When I see a street sweeper, automated, with a driver, being replaced, front bucket loaded, two dump trucks, two pickup trucks, five drivers, and five people picking up pieces of paper on Broadway, there's something wrong. Our city is not being managed. We got questions that people over here talk about concessions on a boardwalk. That boardwalk is a mess. You got signed rules and regulations. I don't know where the city council is. These people could be sued. You're not enforcing any of the codes. Just Sunday, there was a guy over there on a skateboard at a bicycle dinner. He went there unconscious for 15 minutes. They took him off to the hospital.
Oh, we don't have ours.
It's ridiculous. I don't know where the city council stands on this stuff. But we have a waste of money in this town, a total waste. I came from an area of manufacturing. You didn't produce, you were gone. And that's it. I worked very hard for my money for 40 years, and I really don't want to give it away. 20 guys sweeping a street. What do you need a front bucket loader for? To sweep a street? Can anyone tell me? For a piece of paper? You don't need it. On Washington Boulevard, there's an area 10 feet by 200 feet that had weeds. They brought over a front bucket loader, two dump trucks, a bus with about 10 guys in it, and they pulled weeds all day long. After that, they put down some mulch. They came back two weeks later, and the weeds were all there again. You got the wrong equipment, the wrong people doing the wrong thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. And again, we appreciate your comments, and we will take that very much into consideration, as you're saying. You have another one?
Sorry?
Ah, Mrs. Burden. I'm sorry. Yes, and Mr. Artie.
Dr. Garcia, 58 years old. Even a couple of questions about the front loader and guys, everything. I watch everybody. I spend a lot of time watching everybody. They will clean the snow away from the storm drains, or the storm drains over papers. They need the front loader to move that snow, those piles of snow for the storm drains. I was watching them. I watch a crowd. I watch everybody around here. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Artie. I do vouch for what Mr. Artie said, you know, we're not towers, and it was a shame we built. We appreciate very much, Mr. Artie, here.
Too bad, wasn't it? 25 years too fast, 25 years of a Tina. This is really a important issue. This could be a burden on the residents here in the city of Homage, the tax item. We need four votes to pass this, okay? The community doesn't really know very much about this, and it's really quite late at night. So I'm respectfully going to ask you to take a vote to sign up, so that the community knows about this, and can kind of have their thoughts expressed here. The other thing is, how many employees are we talking about here for this 2 million dollars? How many do you think are going to get to retire? And what is the salary range of those employees?
Actually, who do you have last? Is that correct?
Oh, can you help?
They're already last, right?
Who's last?
Maybe you can help.
Do you want to go ahead and ask that question?
No, that's pretty much it. I just want to know, how many employees are we talking about? What is the largest salary we're talking about? And, you know, what's the range of salaries that we're talking about?
Well, first, I just want to say that this authorization is not just for the current retirement of some employees. We have employees that retired last year, and the employees still getting paid out because we tried to pay out a complete free use to help soften it. So we had a combination of CSC, people included in here, as well as police fire, and execs that had left and earned payouts over this year. If you can, people, and I can just quickly count out the back end employees of this. It covers 40 employees.
What is the range of salary?
I don't know the range of salary, I just know the payout, as far as what's being bonded for. But the salary is, as a benefit of CSC, of police and fire, if you're going anywhere, from probably $70,000 to $75,000, upwards of $130,000, $140,000.
So, yes, the bond issue, those of us who are paying taxes, and our taxes have gone up, they're continuing to go up, they're paying more taxes, we're doing this and that. I think the residents need more time to digest this, and a factual document from the city would be appreciated. And by bonding, what is the benefit to the city to do that? I really do not think you ought to be voting on this decision. So with that, I'm saying thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Garcia. Back now.
As far as the benefits, I can only speak to the financial benefits. So there's two financial benefits to this particular bonding. It's one we budgeted this year to bond for these separation payments. We do not have existing resources to pay them. So if we do not authorize this bonding, we'll have a $2.5 million total on our budget this year. The other piece is, as I mentioned before, by being able to bond it, we're able to smooth out these payments over 10 to 15 years, as opposed to having to pay them one month off. Those are two benefits actually bonding involves.
Is that the tax base, more or less, residents?
Well, like I said before, if we had just incorporated it into our budget, or paid out of surplus or raised taxes, it would have been over a 6% increase. As we get to smooth it over 10 to 15 years, we get to adjust that down to under a 0.6% tax increase.
Okay, so that would be because the community knows.
So I would just point out a few things. First of all, just before here in a row, we've had this exact discussion. So it's not a new discussion for the city, even though some folks are always hearing it for the first time. As we mentioned earlier, each year, the item has been less, and that's because we're moving in the right direction. How it's done elsewhere is many other municipalities do exactly what we're doing. In fact, unfortunately, these days, with tight finances all around, most do that. Some set of dedicated reserves over years, which would be a wonderful thing for us to get to, as we're still recovering Friday and June, that we don't yet have that level of reserves. We certainly don't have the ability to certain, to absorb an additional 1 point equivalent, 1.8% on our tax bill into our budget. And finally, this is part of the process of lowering the cost of the government, right? What we're trying to do is in a graceful way shrink the size of the workforce as folks retire, not replacing them. And this is what the piece is here, right? And those are the difficult choices in how we constantly reorganize the way our city operations run, so that we don't have to replace everybody who retires, and that we actually achieve savings over the long term, provided that we afford ourselves the time to achieve those savings. And so that is the financial wisdom behind doing this, and it makes sense, and the alternatives don't make sense.
Okay, that sounds good. The other, the question then is, of the 40 employees that will be leaving, do any of those jobs have to be replaced?
Yeah.
And if not, can the city commit to not hiring those 40 employees?
So have you asked that? So there's always some that have to be replaced. For example, if someone leaves from, let's say, the water plant, right, where that has specific staffing levels that you absolutely have to have, then, you know, you're going to have to replace that individual. But wherever possible, we're endeavoring not to replace those people, and that's what we've been doing and working very hard on.
Okay, so any kind of fact sheet, what you did last time, you floated a bond, and how many of those employees want to be hired, etc., and so forth? And then your proposal for this fund would be helpful for the residents to understand that. And much of what you're saying, Jack, does make sense. However, we need some kind of a pledge or an oath from the city that these people are going to retire and then quickly replace, and on top of it, we're paying the bonds, and on top of it, we're going to have to pay all these people's retirement, and on and on and on and on. So that would be helpful. Put it on the website, let me know, so we can get the message out, and that would be very much appreciated. So thank you.
The point well taken, Mr. Garcia. Thank you, thank you so much for coming. Thank you, Ms. Hightower. Do we have someone else that wants to comment? Okay, we'll go with this young man, devil, Mr. Rendell. Welcome, and I know that it's a little late, but I'm glad you stayed with us. We're looking to hear from everybody.
First, I'm Barry S. Barnes. Recent homeowner, so he kind of...
And if not, can the city commit to not hiring those 40 employees?
So have you asked that? So there's always some that have to be replaced. For example, if someone leaves from the water plant, right, that has specific staffing levels that you absolutely have to have, then, you know, you're going to have to replace that individual. But wherever possible, we're endeavoring not to replace those people. And that's what we've been doing and working very hard.
Okay, so any kind of fact sheet, what you did last time you implemented bonds? And how many of those employees want to be hired and so forth? And then your proposal for this fund would be helpful for the residents to understand that. And much of what you're saying, Jack, does make sense. However, we need some kind of a pledge or an oath from the city that these people are going to retire and then quickly replace, and on top of it, we're paying the bonds, and on top of it, we're going to have to pay all these people who retire and so on and on and on. So that would be helpful. Put it on the website, let me know so we can get the message out. And that would be very much appreciated. So thank you.
The point well taken, Ms. DuBelle. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you, Ms. Hightower. Do we have someone else that wants to comment? We'll go with this young man, devil little Mr. Vendo. Holcomb, and I know that it's a little late, but I'm glad you stayed with us. Hope to hear from everyone.
Chris Jones, 37 bars. Recent homeowner, so kind of important. First thing I want to know is, what makes someone eligible for early retirement? So I'd love to find that for myself.
Do you want to finish your question?
No, I don't. You're the best one. Is it a injury or?
Well, it can be sometimes. There can be disability retirements on some occasions, but generally speaking, eligibility for retirement is a function of how many years you've served within the public sector. So for instance...
It's not people beating the system?
No, it's not that at all. Sometimes, you know, whether it's involved, these measures involve incentive support, people are hiding the salary structure to leave so that we can bring in more employees. This guy actually came along to go lower salaries, but there's no magic bullet to answer your question.
And the individuals that you said who don't have to be replaced, what would that hold behind them? Like, I know the fire department, there were layoffs of them, and that cuts into our safety. So as a concerned citizen, do we...
It's a matter of interpretation, but we also remember that the term parameters were added to enhance your safety. So that's a longstanding lingering debate within the city.
All right, but, um, like, I feel like everything would have to be replaced.
It's a matter of interpretation, yeah.
Out of the 40 potential retirees, what would you say would have to be replaced?
You know, I don't have a list of what is in front of me.
Does it have, approximately?
I could not say. I'd have to go through each list of all the departments.
So with the bond, it's 0.6% tax rate, something like that, I heard?
More or less, yes.
And without...
No, I'm sorry. What you're getting at is if...
I don't mean to cut you off.
Just to... You have a few minutes to speak, you should.
Just to help me understand better, why not the bond? Why would the bond not be an issue? And why would you, why would it come out of our pockets as opposed to it coming out of the bonds pocket? Why would, like, I heard the number is 6% versus 0.6, I think?
Let me make sure I'm being clear to help through. So this item is being bonded so that the payments are smoothed out, as the controller mentioned, over a period of years, so that it costs you less per year.
Right.
While you achieve savings as a city by shrinking the size of the workforce. The alternatives, they all cost upfront, which you would feel more expensively in a tax type...
So why is the alternative even a question for an alternative? Why can't it just be bonded? Have you talked about the whole thing or something?
As formally as we approve that city council.
And why would you not approve it altogether? Do you guys live here?
I don't have the answer, so I wouldn't approve. I recommend we approve.
So basically, you guys vote for this three to two in favor. Why not just, like, she, the lady who spoke before me was saying you should table it for another day, but I don't see what we would have to table it for because it seems like common sense to vote for the bond, right?
We have to pay these costs.
Yeah, they're required by contract.
Like I said, I literally just closed my home. You know, I see a four-digit number for a month pretty much for my taxes and, you know, I'm kind of just trying to get a grasp of it.
Would you like to come up and ask these important questions?
And I almost feel like what happened before was almost like a filibuster, and this is more an important situation because they're going to drink regardless, whether you sell them beers or not, they're going to drink. I feel like this whole room, I doubt, this is a very important issue compared to...
We appreciate, and certainly we understand this concern that we all have, our money and these are contractual obligations that we have, that we don't have a choice in. And we just have to plan, as Mr. Chairman was saying, the most intelligent way of handling debt. And this is probably the most intelligent.
Like I said, first law homeowner, and you might see me more frequently here, whether I got a behind the mic or not, and, you know, it is an election coming up in a few months. Thank you.
Okay, John, thank you again. Thank you. Mr. Vendo? And then we'll go with Mr. Gussel, yes, and then the fact that... And Mr. Vendo?
I know the city manager would have been very disappointed if I didn't get on to you on this. I answered your question. You know, while I get the whole idea of spreading these payments, and we're obligated to make these payments, yes, and while I understand the narrative of spreading it out, the counter to that argument is it's also kicking the can down the road, shifting responsibility to potentially our children and things like that. John, I apologize for cutting you off, but you actually just made a great point, just for educational purpose for everybody. So it does shift the burden to our children, but it also shifts the savings, and that's the point, that the burden and the savings are supposed to balance out. And so if we, as current taxpayers, would feel an undue burden to pay the cost immediately while future taxpayers would reap the savings. Well?
And I do, and there are ways. We've done special assessments, one-time assessments to deal with things that it could have been handled that way. The other issue is, and I've worked this up before, is this, we have this rainy day fund, and if I'm reading the budget correctly, at the end of the 2014, 2015 budget year, there was $7 million of it. And I believe we had $2.8 billion to it in the '15, '16 fiscal year, and $2.9 million this year, which brings it up to about $13 million. So, and I've asked this question previously for borrowing, is what is that rainy day fund for if it's not for things like this, unanticipated expenses that aren't budgeted for?
This was an anticipated expense, and it was assumed in the budget. And we do use the rainy day fund when prudent and applicable, but using it in a big lump sum like this would not be financially advisable or advantageous to the city and all of us taxpayers. It really just doesn't.
Okay, and then I just, another should I add, what, the fact that the public hearing is taking place now, you will vote on it 30 seconds from now, you know, again, it calls into question the integrity of this process whereby you're supposed to deliberate on the comments from the public, but yet you're voting immediately after receiving comments. It really, true or not, it does create a perception, it's calling the integrity of the process into question. And again, I would ask you, with these public hearings, you should not be voting on the same meeting that the public hearings have taken place, because you should be taking this information, this feedback back, and deliberating upon it. You're not deliberating when you vote directly after getting the comment. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vendo. Thank you for the points that you're making. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Gussel, good to see you, Mr. Gussel.
Good evening, Jay Gussel, Captain of Homage. I mean, I understand this. I've been to several meetings, I've seen regulations and questions before. I understand that they're a result of contractual obligations, city negotiating with employees. The problem that I have is that there's going to be another one behind this one, and there's going to be another one behind that one, and so on and so on, to the point where it basically becomes business as usual. It really shouldn't be. There's got to be a better way than handing out, you know, suitcases for money to people upon separation. I think the city management needs to really change the culture that has existed forever in order to minimize these kinds of exposures in the future. The other thing I want to comment on is kind of a response, this gentleman's concern is about what he sees as inefficiency in a crew that he had observed that would field with. That's really another management failure. And it's going on year after year, decade after decade. Why? Well, because of what we saw here tonight. We saw hundreds of people pack these pews. We saw a media void to cover a public hearing over whether or not certain establishments can sell alcohol. City now, immediately on the heels of that public hearing, holds a hearing to put another $2.5 million on our credit card, the taxpayers' credit card. I don't think there's three dozen people left in the room. So really, in answer to that gentleman's question, we have only ourselves to blame. We're the people who are too apathetic and differently go off our asses and hold you guys accountable.
Thank you, Mr. Gussel. We appreciate everyone's comments. We have a young lady there, yes? Please, come forward.
Father McGrath, I hope that was answered. I actually have a question. I'm sorry. I have a question so that I can understand the bond issue. Everyone keeps saying that early retirement incentive packages are contractual. Is that correct?
Yes.
They're employment contracts that pre-existed?
Collective bargaining agreements.
Say it.
Collective bargaining agreements. The union contracts.
With the police and the heart. And they, when do they expire?
Well, that's the thing.
They don't have an expiration?
Well, that's something called the charter agreement, whereby the terms of expired contract remain in effect until successor agreements ratified.
Even self-retirement?
So these, it provides, frankly, this tremendous difficulty to really negotiate this and that, the community bond convention really cross the state and something that almost every municipality shares because of the charter agreement.
Even the incentive to retire, because it's a contractual issue, it doesn't expire? I mean, there's certain things that do expire.
Well, certainly, we offer different incentives in the case, and they do expire, actually.
I was going to say, because the salary, the pay raises expire.
You know, the incentives can expire. We control that more than what the underlying terms of the cruel payouts are in that which are set forth in the collective bargaining agreements themselves. That's a contractual obligation.
Okay, but my point being is, it's not as transparent as I think it could be in the tax, when you're understanding that our real estate property tax is going to go off basically on what looks like an early retirement incentive. To me, an early retirement is, you know, again, it could be contractual, I don't know if everybody understands that, but it seems as though somebody made a decision, an informed decision, that there are certain people that need to go. Maybe they're at high levels of pay, but even a high level of paid employee isn't essential employee now. I would quit being, it could be just a very highly overpaid employee, I don't know as possible. But there's some transparency in this. When I saw this on the agenda, I said, you know, $2.5 million would just plug right into the real estate property tax, sort of like, we vote, we need to go, here's your bill. And what are we paying for? Or we, this is what we raised the issue, let's do a lot of these people, and get this early retirement incentive. That's all it says that it's paying for, it's not paying for anything else, I guess. That's the only benefit it's paying for, correct? Yeah, that's a very unusual, it seems to me, a very unusual benefit for a lot of employees. And it's usually a one-time deal. I mean, my experience in business, which, again, is not, you know, vast, it's open for a certain amount of time to encourage a certain number of people. You can do that by attrition, you can do it by layoffs. You may not be able to do it with these folks if they're contractual, but there's some transparency in this one here, especially since it's bonded with early basis. So it's new to me. If I think it's 5.6, I know that would be a less, but, you know, it seems to be something that could be, as the lady says, you know, we should let the folks know. They did come to the, you know, the boardwalk. This is a big issue. It's money issue, but it's your pocketbooks. I don't know why people don't pay attention. But I know, that's just my thoughts.
They didn't know.
They didn't know. But again, I don't know. I would like to know why those early retirement incentives, and they're not going away next year, right? Well, they'd be $1 million now, next year.
We don't know right now.
They don't know sundown? How could they not know? How could you not know?
We can't project what that will be. Man, thank you so much. I think that your questions are very, very applicable.
Well, I actually have...
I have to say that we, we're going to have to continue and hear from other folks that are, and certainly we appreciate what you're saying about transparency. We believe in that too. As much as we can, I mean, we try to provide the incentive, whatever we can afford. And I know there's been questions about all kinds of things, you know, about the surplus money and so on and so on. The fact is that when you have money put away, you're actually able to borrow at a lower interest rate.
I don't think people borrow, and Mr. Chad is probably doing the right thing on that issue, but why is it that I can't?
But we appreciate that you're able to stay with us and to ask those questions. We thank you.
Okay, well, I hope you give more information on that issue then. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments from the public on item number five? Okay, with that, okay, no more comments from our council, or is it closing?
I am certain there's a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the removal fraction installation of a sludge collection system at the city's board collection control plant with the lowest response up there.
Hey, the sludge collection system has the ability to use the highway to be replaced as it is the mechanism used for the removal of settled solids in facility. Funding is provided through capital improvement plan.
Any comments from the council on item number seven? Okay, comments from the public, folks, on this item, you're saying sludge removal is an essential part of our sanitation system here in the city. With that, we move on to our next item.
I am certain there's a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase this latest general hardware item.
This item provides the city with the ability to make hardware purchases as needed during the course of performing daily jobs, which require no delivery and a limited pickup past the local fire station.
Any comments from the council? Item number seven. Yes? Any comments from the public on item number seven, the purchasing of general hardware item? We have one more, next item. I hear some, yes?
Sorry, maybe you guys would like not hand again.
That's all right.
Chris Jones, just regarding the hardware, I heard when the boardwalk got redone, the hardware cost approximately $4 million. Is that the hardware you're looking to replace? There's certain screws that go into certain wood, and that the wood is the...